... One mission under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, he's so huge. Yes, he is.
James from Jefferson Elementary. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I can hear the story. As is also usual in customary, we will tell you that you are not required to stay unless you can. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Board Administrative Reports. We will start with the Superintendent's Report. Well, I guess I do have something to say in the President's Report. I did go to Wasby and there were a bunch of breakout sessions which were rather interesting this year. Sometimes it's a hit or miss as to whether or not they really have any value, but a couple of them actually I hope to mention more about as we get into our workshop discussion tonight as they had some relevance though not directly connected. Superintendent's Report.
Yes, good evening. We have, because we have an additional week between Board DPs this month, we have a little bit longer of a Superintendent's Report this evening. Jacob Shapiro celebrates, hooray, hooray, we did it. Shapiro celebrates its school family completion of the Feelings Buddy Self-Regulation Toolkit Lessons from Conscious Discipline. Conscious Discipline is a comprehensive self-regulation program which teaches social emotional skills along with academic skills and has been proven to increase learning across all domains. The kindergarteners in Mrs. Patterson's and Mrs. Flores' classroom at Jacob Shapiro now know how to recognize their in name, their emotions, choose ways to calm themselves, and have strategies to solve their own problems. And congratulations students on getting kindergarteners into this practice in pretty incredible process. Exciting news at Washington Elementary. Washington Elementary was published on the front page of the November 2013 edition of Teaching Today newspaper. Check out the full article by clicking on this link and it is about a creating of culture of literacy and spotlights schools for 2011, 12, and 13. As you recognize, we celebrate and have been celebrating annually the success of literacy and beating the odds at Washington Elementary School. Congratulations to Christine Hodgson, Music Specialist at Jacob Shapiro and Emmeline Cook Elementary Schools, and she was recently certified by Conscious Discipline as a certified instructor. She completed a rigorous application process spanning the course of two years to achieve this recognition. Congratulations to Christine. Little taste of Italy at Carl Trager. Family and Consumer Science Students at Carl Trager Middle School hosted parents and staff at an Italian restaurant. The students did a remarkable job and I'm sure enjoyed by all. Martin Luther King Junior Essay Contest Winners. Congratulations to the 2014 Martin Luther King Essay Contest Winners which was sponsored by One Oshkosh Human Relations Network. Over 450 Oshkosh area school district students who submitted essays this year. Essay Contest Winners and their teachers were recognized at the 19th Annual Martin Luther King Community Celebration at the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh on Monday, January 20. In addition, congratulations to Oaklawn Elementary, Trager Middle School, and Oshkosh North High School for the highest percentage of participants in the contest. Each school will be receiving a check for $400 from Chancellor Wells and the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh Foundation. In the elementary division, first place Sarah Morehouse, Carl Trager, Mrs. Springer's class. Second place Emily Aaron Page, Oaklawn Elementary, Mr. Warren's 5th Grade Class. And third place Taylor Quancy, Webster Elementary School, Mrs. Bonifus's 5th Grade Class. At the middle school level, Cassie Labillaty at Carl Trager Middle School, Mrs. Van Oost's 8th Grade Class. Second place was also at Carl Trager, Matthew Kolb at Winter. And third place Hunter Heim at Carl Trager. At the high school division, Catherine Dumna, Oshkosh North High School, Grade 11, Carmen Merritt at Oshkosh North. And third place was Maggie Claire Van Hooken at Oshkosh North in Mr. Pollack's class. All three of these students were in his class and submitted. I was hearing tales that with 450, the essay contest essay readers were overwhelmed and had lots of work to do as they discovered that the participation was far higher than in the past. Merrill Elementary students received a message from the Oshkosh Police Department. Thank you to the Oshkosh Police Department for setting up Playtime Means No Time for Crime at Merrill Elementary School. Activities that included many police officers being involved. Please do check out the North High School Art Blog. Throughout the past semester, Oshkosh North High School art students have been documenting their artwork through an online portfolio blog. Each student has included photographs of their original artwork in addition to written descriptions of their experience during the art-making process. Students have found the blog to be a great way to share their artwork with a wider audience and to record their growth and to allow digital artworks such as animations to be enjoyed in their best format. Please take time to enjoy the Oshkosh North High School Student Photography, Sculpture, Animation, Jewelry, Mosaic, Painting, and Drawing Work. Student art blogs are listed by class on the right side of the screen. Please feel free to encourage comments about their work on the blog. Students will continue to add to their blog as this new semester begins. Add your email, follow-up to the email gadget, and below is the art, is the address. I'm sorry that it appears because it's in yellow, it becomes hard to read, but if you get to the North High School Spartan Art Blog, you will find that location. Ready for Four, Getting Ready for Kindergarten. What an exciting time. We are getting ready for kindergarten as the Oshkosh area school districts ready for four learning. As January comes to a close, literacy learning is in full swing in 4K. Children at Davis Childcare Center in Miss Kimberly's classroom have been working on more detailed questioning before, during, and after reading a story. Teachers are modeling writing daily for students through the Daily News as children learn about letters, sounds, and print concepts. Recently, children have been responding to read aloud books through journaling. This is just one page from Young Davis 4th Grade Art Book related to two stories recently read in class and so to be able to draw the story as you have learned it. Again, another activities relating to Green Meadow Elementary School. The Martin Luther King Wall shares the dream. Students learned about many changes made possible by Martin Luther King Jr.'s peaceful efforts. The Martin Luther King Jr. Wall of Honor is a tradition at Green Meadow and Tipler, and during the week of Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebrated holiday, students volunteer their free time to create a wall of honor. This longstanding tradition shares many great achievements that Martin Luther King Jr. peacefully fought and accomplished. At a recent pre-basketball game, Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association Service Award was presented at the January 17th, Oshkosh North versus Oshkosh Basketball, Oshkosh West got misdone this, doubleheader. Affinity Health System and their athletic trainers were presented with the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association Service Award. The awards were given on behalf of the Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West High School for distinguished service to the athletic department, student athletes, and families of the Oshkosh area school district. The Oshkosh North trainers are Joe Fox and Ashley Harrians, and Oshkosh West trainers are Andrea Kramer and James Pond. Mittens, mittens, and more mittens. Merrill Elementary School Staff Members, Sue McGrath, fondly known as Mittens in the process of completing 100 pair of mittens for cold-handed middle school students. Sue started by making mittens out of old sweaters and adding warm fleece lining. She got the idea from leftover sweater material and they make a pair to give away through donations of fleece lining, thread, sweaters from Merrill Middle School staff. Sue is about to complete her 100th pair to be given away. The staff and students in Merrill Middle School and the Oshkosh area school district are fortunate because we can get to work with mittens. I mean Sue, thanks for all you do. I believe I've seen some of those mittens and they certainly in the last two days would have been most valuable for our students to have. Band students worked with a renowned composer. On January 13th, 2014, 7th and 8th Grade Band Students at South Park and Merrill Middle School had the honor of working with a world-renowned composer, Dr. Quincy Hillard. Dr. Hillard is the composer in residence and a professor of music at the University of Louisiana in Lafayette. He has composed music for the 1996 Atlanta Olympics and a documentary has numerous other compositions. He also travels worldwide working and mentoring music students and teachers. Dr. Hillard helped the South Park and Merrill students understand more about posture, breath, support, and production of good tone. He provided fun lessons and was motivating and inspiring with those he worked. Picture here, Dr. Hillard and Merrill and South Park's Directors, Charles and Emily Bauer, who hosted Dr. Hillard. Tipler Middle School, Tipler Middle School's Committing to Excellence and Excellence Equals Success. Mrs. Freestad and Mr. Brady's Social Studies Class studied different ways of revolutions in Europe. One revolution they studied in depth was the Industrial Revolution of France. Students conducted research in small groups to determine inventions of the time and conditions and changing roles of women during that time. After researching, students put together a poster to display the information that they had presented to the class. Oshkosh North Spartan Nets win first place. The Oshkosh North Female Acapella Group, the Spartan Nets, won first place in the mid-morning Kiwanis Oshkosh Talent Untapped Competition last Friday night. They competed against seven other professional solo and student groups. Congratulations to them. A Minute to Win Competition at Webster. Webster Middle School had the second PBIS celebration. They had a Minute to Win It competition with Mrs. Walker as the advisor and represented by Wyatt Style. There are quite a range of Superintendent activities. And then I'm going to turn the presentation over to talk about a wonderful outdoor summer activity that Board Director Steve Elason has been coordinating for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Just to share with everyone, this, you know, as I see it, wonderful program that brought together really the best in our community, the best in our schools, the best for kids. And I'll let our guest, Dr. Smeltney, cover it in detail, but essentially this idea spawned from a few good days of ice skating on the early season ice on Miller's Bay, all within eye shot of Webster Stanley School. Thinking about how many, how can we get more kids out in winter enjoying our wonderful Wisconsin winters, some physical activity, and the upcoming Olympics really, sort of inspiration and health. And so without much work, Dr. Eric took over, led the charge. We were lucky to have an Oshkosh resident who is a 2002 U.S. Olympic Women's Speed Skating Alternate, living quite close to the school, Dr. Christina Lehner, husband Nate, who's been instrumental in this whole process. Of course, our principals at Webster Stanley who were full-on open to this idea and really got the program off the ground. So if I can introduce for a minute, Dr. Eric Smeltney, Dr. Lehner, and Nate Lehner, as well as our principals, I think, Aaron Manders and Phil Marshall, if you just maybe give us a quick synopsis.
Do you want them to come up to the table?
Oh, please, yes.
So, I mean, as Steve said, this really kind of began as sort of a spur of a moment thing, but we had actually, Steve and I met working a little bit on sort of the sale week programs from last spring. And what we had sort of thought was, is there a way, sort of looking at student fitness and student activity? And that, I mean, it seems as if in some of the focus of, well, we need to do testing and we need to do academics and things like that, that some, an easy place to kind of cut or to look where stuff's very not greatly measurable is in this sort of fitness realm of things. So we had sort of thought about, well, is there anything that we can do? And I'm a family doctor with Theta Care in the area. Is there anything that we can do as far as helping the, helping the health of the community? Because what we, we know from studies that we've done and throughout the Fox Valley and the weight of the community that we're pretty fat as a community, that our kids are fat, and that kids are inactive. So, and that there's, there's definitely recommendations that this is, that activity is good. So this was sort of kind of our thoughts. And what we had sort of thought about was, is there a way that we can do something? And how, so this was sort of a little bit of a testing ground type of project of, well, can a healthcare provider along with pulling people, people from the community who have expertise in this area, partner with schools and some other local businesses and see, well, what can we do? And it's, and basically we weren't really sure, well, how receptive, how excited will kids be? And I mean, we got, we had sort of talked to a few guys and said, hmm, maybe we'll get 5%, 10% response. We were like, we'll do this kind of on a spur of a moment. I think we gave them a couple of weeks lead time and then it was a few weeks lead time for there. So it was really not a very long time to plan anything at all. And I mean, we got, I think it was close, I looked at, we targeted really 3rd grade through 5th grade and then the middle school at Webster Stanley. And in the middle school, even with all the other activities, we got about 10% of the student body came out and was interested. In the elementary school, it was about 20%. So I mean, really very high student enthusiasm about the whole thing. And we were able to, through my employer and some of the monies and things like that, we were able to pull together a few thousand dollars. These are, I brought along some of the skates, so we're going to pass out skates tomorrow. So, I mean, we were basically able to buy nice, high-quality skates for about 50 kids, which will kind of run through the school as sort of an ongoing thing to kind of encourage. So it was definitely something that can be done, it should be done. And actually, Play It Again was really very helpful, too. They cut us a good deal so we could get more bang for our buck and all that sort of stuff. So, I mean, it seems like there's definitely people who are very interested and willing to partner with the schools if, if we have any sort of a way to kind of activate folks in the community like myself. So, so that's sort of what we, what we saw, what we, what we shown. So, and we'll, we'll keep, keep it going throughout the, throughout here and see. Now, we had sort of this splash event, now is it sort of sustainable, is this, is this energy keep going? So we can kind of watch that and measure that, so.
I just want to say that Aaron and I were very pleased to have had this opportunity to kind of literally fall into our laps. And Mr. Eliason is always very motivated to get kids active and motivated and excited about, you know, being active. And during the winter months, that's usually a bigger challenge. And the great thing that I like is that we have an appreciation for trying to utilize our natural resources and Oshkosh is surrounded by water. And to be able to get kids, you know, involved in sailing as we've been able to do, and that's become a 4th grade sort of institution now that they get involved in. And now we're starting this very small thing with ice skating and just, and why not use our resource literally in our back door? Well, our front door, I guess, is what it is. But anyway, it's also been just, we're also always looking for opportunities to partner with our community. And, and as was mentioned, you know, Play It Again Sports, the goodwill organizations here, and Theta Care have been very generous with us to make this happen in a very short turnaround. We've only had one opportunity for the kids to get out and skate because last Thursday was, was too cold, but we're looking again for tomorrow for the kids to get out. So we would invite anybody that would want to come out to Miller's Bay and, and just take a look and see how they're doing. It would be great, so.
Students are excited. They want to be, they want to participate. I've got some more, more permission slips for Dr. Eric that I have to give today as well as the returns for, for the ice skates that Theta Care is going to help sponsor. So I, I think, you know, I think Phil and I were both kind of a little, we were skeptical to see how many students were going to be interested, and it really took off. And I think it's only going to get bigger as students start to communicate and talk with one another in school. They had a blast and I think it's going to be something larger. I know we've already started to talk a little bit about spring and summer and how we might be able to use the trail along the, along the park there for possible inline skating and do some of that as well. So, pretty excited.
Yeah. And I mean, actually just chatting around the office, people are very excited about being able to work with the school. And I mean, one of my, one of my partners says, you know, Thursday I have to work late. That didn't work very well for me, but if you did, if I, if there was something going on Tuesday, I would do it and have sort of talked about other things. So, so if there's other schools that say, hey, we wish to kind of partner with, with Theta as a healthcare organization, say, what's, what's a good, healthy quality after-school type of activity? Or, or even further down the road, okay, what's, what's the best way to keep our kids active and active even within the school hours? I think, I think there's definitely interest there, so.
Who did, who cleared the ice for you?
The city.
They did.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Isn't that cool?
Well, it is. I actually, I said something to my daughter a couple of years ago when we were talking about ice skating outside. And at that time, the, the city actually had no outdoor rinks that they were providing. So the idea that they were willing to come out and clear away a section for you, I thought was pretty admirable.
Just a point of history for all of you that may or may not know, but a lot of our elementary schools in Oshkosh years ago, it used to freeze, like, I know, being at Emmeline Cook, I'd always heard that they would freeze the back part of that playground and have a big ice skating rink. And they did that a lot at the elementary schools in Oshkosh, and that's just been kind of a thing of the past. And so it's nice to be able to see this kind of resurface in somewhat of a different way, but, so.
Thank you, may I? Oh, sorry.
I just want one more question. I haven't heard from the skater.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can talk.
Well, the only Olympian in the room.
Yes, exactly.
The pleasure was mine, but it was, it was just amazing to just have such excitement from the kids and just to be able to meet these wonderful folks who are trying to just get something like this going. It's so cool to use the natural resources. I remember, you know, just like what you were saying, but I remember skating last year with Nate where he took this video just for fun of me skating out there. And it's just such a beautiful sport and it's a lifetime sport, which I just think is such a neat thing. All you need is a pair of skates. And it's, I think it's really neat. I think this is a great program and, and it's just great exposure for, for kids. There are so many kids who probably never would have skated if, you know, you all wouldn't have started this.
And it's neat, too, with the, just what, what Mr. Marshall was talking about, the community involvement. We live right around the corner from Webster Stanley, but we don't have kids. Like, we don't have, we wouldn't have really any real connection with it other than, you know, if they wouldn't have gone and like, you know, saw, saw the video of Christina skating and tracked us down and like, who are you guys? And, oh, we live around the corner and, you know, and, and so it's neat to see a school that's open to that kind of thing because we all get so busy with the things that we want to do. And, you know, it, it would be very easy, I would think, for them to be like, well, we just were busy with our stuff, we don't have time for this. But to be open enough to do that and, I mean, you know, to go in and talk to all the kids, there was just awesome. We wouldn't have done that otherwise, you know, so that's a neat thing.
Nate, can I, can you share a link or way we can see that video? It was really quite a stunning video.
It is.
Video of our Olympian out on Miller's Bay. It's just, and beautiful videography by Nate.
Yeah, I was, I run a video production business here in town and I was experimenting with my new aerial video helicopter flying around out there. And it was, it was one of those days last year where the ice just melted down and refroze and it was just like freshly Zamboni ice. And normally you would never, ever, ever take a pair of speed skates out there, ever, because they're so long, it just doesn't work. We're like, hey, let's go try it. And I don't need to try my video anyway. And it actually worked pretty well. And so if you go, if you, you'd have to Google it, if I tell you the link, I don't even know it. But if you just Google "speed skating Lake Winnebago,"
I can forward the link to you. I can forward the link to you.
Thank you all very much.
And he actually also has, I mean, they did a spectacular job. I mean, I think a lot of the enthusiasm and the good turnout actually was, was thanks to Christine and Nate as far as sort of sharing the Olympic experience because there is another video that Nate posted that was actually of some of the kids at Webster Stanley giving a message to one of the, the current Olympic speed skaters.
Oh.
As far as a goodwill. So, so that's, that was very, very cute. And that's, I saw that that was posted as well. So, thanks for.
It's the first one that pops up.
Yeah, we're pretty good friends with one of the skaters in the Olympics now. So we had all the kids like, oh, Joe, enchant. Something close to that. It is like. Is this what you're talking about?
This is it.
Yeah.
That's the first one that pops up. Oh, that's you. See what you're doing.
Man, that is like glass. Look at that.
That is great video.
I don't think, yeah, I've never seen one like that.
This is for milk control? How many times have you crashed it?
Too many times.
Would you be willing to come and talk to other schools? Okay. Good to know. I want a space at Lakeside. What should you do?
You'll probably get more hits now.
Look at that ice, though.
We don't even charge for this service.
Oh, that's gorgeous. Those are some long legs, dude.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Oh, well, thank you guys for your support. Thank you, Mr. Eliason, for setting all that up.
It's all fun.
Fantastic. That, that is exactly the sort of community spirit that we like to see. That's fantastic. All right. Thus ends the Superintendent's Report. With a dang, Listening Session Report?
Yes, at our last meeting on January 8th, we had a listening session attended by some 11 individuals who shared with us a number of concerns regarding, discussion regarding the public knowing about the referendum. Miscellaneous questions regarding technology were shared and questions answered. Discussion of investment in teachers concerning teacher retention also took place and, and dealing with the issue of compensation for teachers. The referendum also surfaced from another presenter. We had some five individuals who spoke at this session, again, related to compensation and retention of teachers. And last was a discussion related to World Language Program in Oshkosh and that we should certainly focus in on looking at world language growth as a means to help the school district grow. So a very full evening session last Board Meeting.
All right. Thank you. Other reports?
After we hear from them. But they're such a diligent group that want to make this work, that they're exploring some other options, and we'll be able to report to Facilities and Finance at the next meeting.
Okay.
Based on the discussion we learn on Friday mornings.
Yeah. That's a pretty big blow, so unfortunate. The last thing that we discussed in very great detail were the TIF funds. So far, we've received about $311,000 in TIF funds from the city. So we talked about what's the best use of that money. We decided that, you know, while the discussions are happening, we're definitely going to be moving that money into the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. They know how to manage that money, and they're going to do that for us. We also talked about using the money for innovative projects, which would include the hiring of a grant writer, and, but the district would still have oversight over that money. We also discussed the fact that we don't really have an education oversight plan, that we probably need to get that going and get some type of an overarching plan so that we know how do we decide on how we innovate and which fund, or what funds can be used, what types of innovations are, can apply. Another suggestion was to hold the money for the Southside Solution, and it was noted that the district is moving forward on the Southside Solution using $150,000 from the sale of the Green Meadow School. The $150,000 will be used for a survey to that part of town and that community, for redistricting once we have a plan, and an architectural plan for adding on to that school. And that would mean that it would become either a K5 or a 4K5 school. It would be a proper elementary, everybody in the same place, to be clear. At the next meeting, the cost estimate of grant writer will be provided, as well as expectations of startup costs. The administration will talk to architectural firms about timeline of dealing with Lakeside. We'd like to, if we are going to move forward, we want to get it done, and get it done quickly. So we're anxious to get that started and get it moving. There's a schematic plan that is 78 years old for Lakeside to be used as a document to work on some cost estimates.
Yeah, we do have a copy of that.
Oh, great. Okay. The meeting adjourned at 9:45. Next meeting is scheduled for February 20th at 8:00 a.m.
The educational oversight plan, is that what you're saying?
We have no education plan. And so trying to decide how, what kinds of innovations are what we're searching for, we don't have a big plan for an educational plan.
Is that something that the Facilities and Finance Committee is?
No. No, it would be, talk back to.
Okay. That's what I was going to say.
We're going to throw that at Kelly.
That should probably do that.
Kelly's going to do it.
All right. Sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then I also, Stan asked if I wanted to do the update on the Southside Solution, if that's okay with you guys. Okay, so this is basically an update on everything that has happened to date. The Southside Solution issue has been a central focus for the past several weeks. The center of the focus has been to resolve issues related to the need to restore Lakeside Elementary School to a full pre-K4 to grade 5 school, accommodating at least two sections of students at each grade level, thus housing the educational needs of the Lakeside-Green Meadow attendance area. For some five years, a temporary solution has been to educate Lakeside-Green Meadow students at two sites, kindergarten to grade 3 at Lakeside, in the Town of Black Wolf, and grades 4 and 5 at Perry-Tipler Middle School located in the city of Oshkosh. Resolving this issue is goal G5F within the Oshkosh Area School District Strategic Plan. This goal is scheduled to be completed by the 2015-16 school year. Legitimate frustration with resolving the temporary solution has led to parent and community requests to speed up the resolution of this long-term student accommodation problem. The Oshkosh Area School Board approved the school district strategic plan in May of 2013. A possible more rapid solution has not been discussed nor approved by the full school board. However, the school district administration has been asked by the Facilities and Finance Committee of the school board to begin preparation of a Lakeside-Green Meadow solution that would advance the process by a year or more. On Monday evening, January 13th, Stan met with the Lakeside PTO to introduce the UWO Oshkosh faculty members who are working on editing, clarifying, and improving the reliability of the questions for the Southside Solution survey. The UWO faculty will also train and assist the Lakeside PTO to implement the survey. The surveys will be done in February, then tabulated, and the data will be available in March. We expect the results to affirm the desire for a pre-K4 to grade 5 school on one site. Members of the PTO also asked about funding the Southside Solution. Mr. Mack discussed a timeline as per the strategic plan, and they, of course, expressed a desire to see a solution as soon as possible, since they've waited so many years for a solution. Mr. Mack indicated that the members of the school board have had discussions related to the possible use of the refunded City of Oshkosh tax increment funds to be received by the school district over the next three to four years. It was suggested, as the highest priority by those in attendance, to build a 4 to 6 classroom addition to Lakeside Elementary School. It was also suggested that in order to speed up the school addition, the school board approved the temporary use of Oshkosh Area School District fund balance to be repaid by the tax increment funds when they become available over the next three to four years. On Wednesday, January 15th, Mr. Mack met with the school board president, Matt Wiedenhoff, and the school board vice president, Steve Dito, to plan the January 29th school board agenda. Steve reported that he had heard from parents concerning the Monday evening meeting. Steve and Matt discussed the possible solutions. Steve indicated that the use of the proceeds from the sale of Green Meadow and the first year TIF funds would be discussed at the FNF committee meeting on Thursday, January 16th. Steve and Matt also asked Mr. Mack to report on any progress related to the Southside Solution as a part of the superintendent's report during tonight's school board meeting. On Thursday, January 6th, the Facilities and Finance Committee's last agenda item focused on the possible use of the proceeds from the sale of Green Meadow to assist in financing any costs related to the Southside Solution. Allison Garner, Barb Herzog, Steve Eliason, and Steve Dito were present at this meeting. In addition to the Finance and Facilities Committee, the FNF committee discussed the possibility of speeding up the processes to build an addition to the Lakeside Elementary School in order to have classrooms ready by the fall of 2015. This timeline would, of course, require the temporary use of fund balance, as noted above. The Facilities and Finance Committee asked that possible architecture firms be solicited to consider proposals for building such an addition to Lakeside Elementary. The committee also asked that Mr. Mack report on progress toward the Southside Solution as part of the report during tonight's meeting. After the Thursday, after the Thursday evening, January 16th, district PTO monthly meeting, the Lakeside PTO representative also discussed with Mr. Mack the possibility of a shorter timeline for the Southside Solution. Mr. Mack shared with this parent the direction that he received at the FNF meeting earlier that day. He informed her that the action of the FNF committee was not the final step related to this matter, and the full board's action would need to take place at a later date when specifics related to the potential solution have been gathered. On February 12th, 2014, we'll have a school board work session. Since the entire school board has not had the opportunity to discuss the possible solutions considered by the FNF committee, a school board workshop topic needs to be the consideration of a revised timeline for the Southside Solution. District Administration will be prepared to supply details related to the project. And then on February 26th, school board approval of action steps identified by the school board at the 12th meeting, the February 12th meeting, during the work session. These action items could include a financing plan using TIF funds from the city of Oshkosh, building size, design concepts, existing Lakeside building renovation, and possible timeline. All of the above actions are seeking to resolve the Lakeside-Green Meadow temporary solution by the opening of the 2015-16 school year. All future action steps and timelines are subject to the full board of education approval on February 26th. Mr. Mack trusted this outline of the possible Southside Solution, which moved in rapid fashion this past week, will assist you in understanding where this issue has moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for reading that off.
Sure.
Your Facilities and Finance report is also complete, I'm assuming?
Yes, it is.
Are there other reports? Mr. Dito?
Policy and Governance met. One of the items that we discussed was policy 889, which is a new one, and it basically adds some specificity around the concept of partnerships with the district and businesses. The original verbiage is excellent, but we, on the P&amp;G committee, asked that it be taken back and kind of recraft it a bit to be more inclusive of not just business, but also family and community partnerships. If we're going to do a policy on partnerships, let's make it inclusive and just one policy instead of having to come back and deal with different elements of our society. That will be brought back in the March meeting. We discussed possession and use of weapons on school district property. It's policy 443.51. That is, the committee recommended moving that policy forward to the board, and it is on our consent agenda this evening. We discussed policy 433, which is, deals with the open enrollment of students from outside areas into our district, or just across our district into existing schools. We also discussed policy 422.1, the admission of foreign exchange students. The committee recommends, recommended moving that forward for a vote this evening. Also, policy 443, student conduct, and that is on our consent agenda as well this evening. At the end of our meeting, we discussed the concept of special needs vouchers, a resolution that we were looking to craft. It appears that resolution at this point is a non-entity because, quite frankly, the legislative committee which brought up the idea of the special needs voucher seems to think that it's dead on arrival, the way that it is now anyway, in its current form. It is something that we need to keep on our agenda and keep our eyes on, but at this time, it doesn't look like this is going to be something that has a snowball's chance of passing. So, and that would be it for policy notice.
All right. Any other reports? All right, seeing none, we will go on to non-agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? No? All right, seeing none, we will move on to agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Again, seeing none, we will go on to tonight's first workshop, Technology Plan, Gunlock and Technology Team.
I have a seat for somebody. All right. Perfect. Thank you. We are pleased to be able to present to you this evening, but before I get started, what I think would be wise to do is to just kind of do introductions. I know you've seen some of these people in front of you a couple of times with the district technology team. A portion of our membership is here. There's 29 members from throughout the district that are part of the team. We meet on an ongoing basis. We've been meeting on an ongoing basis to work through a lot of the technology improvement issues in the district. So I'm Dave Gunlock. I'm the deputy superintendent. You all know me.
Julie Mulcher, Director of Great Women Assessment.
Kathleen Stefani, Instructional Technology and Information Specialist, Oklon Elementary, Merrill Elementary, and Merrill Middle.
Matt Callahan, kindergarten through 5th grade physical education at Oklon and Washington Elementary.
Julie Buck, IUST and Instructional Technology Coach at Jefferson.
Kristy Levy, teacher at Oshkosh West High School, English Department.
Lexie Vallee, Pencil and Rosal Elementary.
Tim Cole, teacher at Merrill Middle School.
Jeff C., English teacher at West High School.
Okay, I think that's all of us. I'd like to apologize for the barrage of information that you've received. I mean, this started back in December, or actually in October, and we've kind of worked through, but it's a great deal of information. There's always a lot of questions, and that's a good thing, because the frequently asked questions that you've sort of packaged for us have gone a long way to helping us put together and coalescing the referendum information campaign, and that's been a great positive for us. We really appreciate that. This is also a real example of collaboration, because this presentation you're going to see tonight, we put together pretty much offline. So there were those of us who were editing different pieces even up to the beginning of the board meeting. So this is one of those things where you have a situation where we've not presented this together before. We did, we did meet on Monday night, and we did go over sort of a skeleton of what we all wanted to do, but this is sort of our first, this is our first inaugural address, so to speak. So this all started back with the strategic plan that was approved several months ago, and Priority Four involves equity among our schools. And unfortunately, right now, we don't have any, especially in regards to technology. We have very much haves and have-nots. And the reason for that is because most of the haves have been able to garner funding through grants, and the have-nots have not. So we've really been in a situation where we've had the benefit of piloting some technology, seeing what works, seeing what doesn't. And, but now we're really at that point where we need to provide some equity among the district. Goal 4A was to, tasked us to develop and implement a three-year tech plan to address this very issue. As I said, the plan was created by a 29-member team and was approved on December 18th. There were five instructional and four operational goals attached to that plan. The focus was really on changing learning and pedagogy. It was not on the hardware and software tools. You're going to hear that over and over again. This is not in any shape, manner, or form about the technology. This is about handing teachers the tools and the training to change up learning activities, to help give kids increased engagement opportunities, to better balance the playing field for our disadvantaged kids versus our advantaged kids. That's really what this is designed for. If I had to boil it down in one statement, I'm a big fan of, if you can't fit it on a T-shirt, don't say it. And this is one of those things where if you had to boil it all down and put it on a T-shirt, our objective is to provide a rigorous, relevant, and connected personalized learning system that prepares our kids for the world that they will graduate into. A very wise administrator said to me before I came here, "The reason we're doing this is we're planning for what we want to be, not what we already are." And that's really the focal point for this. For the instructional goals, I'll turn it over to Matt.
I have, there were five instructional technology goals. I'll just go over them briefly, but the first one was to provide embedded professional development to assist teachers in leveraging and integrating district technology resources into the curriculum and daily instruction. You know, so a big part of that is hiring of the tech coaches, which is upcoming, to ensure equity of learning activities by installing modern classroom technologies and integrating 21st century skills throughout the Oshkosh Area School District. We'd like to create a 21st century personalized learning system by providing all students with individualized access to technology resources. And the last two, IT4, we'd like to increase student access to hybridized and online courses and learning activities, and we'd like to transition the district from Skyward Student Information System to Infinite Campus and establish a data warehouse with capability to promote data-driven instructional improvement.
Yes. Could you just elaborate a little bit on what you mean by a personalized learning system? That was in the previous slide.
Yeah. One of the huge benefits of technology is, is a lot of the instruction can be tailored so that students can kind of participate at their own level. And rather than having a teacher standing up in front of the classroom where it's one message given to every single student, a lot of instruction with technology allows students to tailor it to their needs. There'll be some examples later with some things that are
T-shirt, don't say it. And this is one of those things where if you had to boil it all down and put it on a T-shirt, our objective is to provide a rigorous, relevant and connected personalized learning system that prepares our kids for the world that they will graduate into. A very wise administrator said to me before I came here, "The reason we're doing this is we're planning for what we want to be, not what we already are." And that's really the focal point for this. For the instructional goals, I'll turn it over to Matt.
There were five instructional technology goals. I'll just go over them briefly, but the first one was to provide embedded professional development to assist teachers in leveraging and integrating district technology resources into the curriculum and daily instruction. So a big part of that is hiring of the tech coaches, which is upcoming, to ensure equity of learning activities by installing modern classroom technologies and integrating 21st century skills throughout the Oshkosh area school district. We'd like to create a 21st century personalized learning system by providing all students with individualized access to technology resources. And the last two, IT4, we'd like to increase student access to hybridized and online courses and learning activities, and we'd like to transition the district from Skyward Student Information System to Infinite Campus and establish a data warehouse with capability to promote data-driven instructional improvement.
Yes. Could you just elaborate a little bit on what you mean by a personalized learning system? That was in the previous slide.
Yeah. One of the huge benefits of technology is a lot of the instruction can be tailored so that students can kind of participate at their own level. And rather than having a teacher standing up in front of the classroom where it's one message given to every single student, a lot of instruction with technology allows students to tailor it to their needs. There'll be some examples later with some things that are going on within the school district that really demonstrates how students have been able to go off on their own and have an environment where they've got to select what they're doing, and it's great to see some of the things that's going on.
And if I can jump in at the high school level, this is where we're starting. We really want students to have the opportunity to personalize their delivery method for their curriculum or their course, and so we're coming up in the fall here, going to offer some of our courses online, hybrid or face-to-face, so you as a student can choose which delivery method or which way personalize it for you, which way you would like to take that course.
What we're really trying to do is get away from the one-size-fits-all because it doesn't, and that's part of what we're trying to work with here. In technology, the advantage we have now that we've never had before in the history of education is we have tools that allow us to do that in a much more effective way and a much more cost-effective way. You know, we could have did one-to-one when other communities did it 10 years ago. The problem was it was exceptionally expensive. The cost of the devices were four to five times what they are today, and it was rare that a district could afford that. Now the costs have dropped substantially, which is a benefit. A couple of the operational goals. Was yours? No, your.
The four operational goals, to support the OSD Emergency Response Plan with appropriate security technologies and school messaging capabilities. We are improving our building security, all the access points are locked, and implementing a new phone system with emergency alerts. And not only that, it's any type of parent communication, whether it's lunch balance or messages need to be sent home, school closing information. It'll be very easy to communicate that way. OT2, relocate the OSD North Side Data Hub, which is in the Lincoln Building, to a district-owned and controlled facility. And this is of extreme importance, especially highlighted by our outage with our internet on January 23, and the entire district was without internet. And as you can see, the last day of the semester was quite a busy day with students finishing their projects and teachers trying to print and give tests and access all their electronic information, and it was kind of an interesting day, we'll say. The third one is to evaluate the OSD database systems and establish short and long-term plans to integrate all systems and adjust district processes to increase efficiency. So we're looking at a way to aggregate the data for better efficiency. We had mentioned a data warehouse for that, and the student information system will be able to talk to the other databases with that. And the last one would be to evaluate the district infrastructure for long-term improvement needs based upon OSD Technology Plan goals. So looking at the wireless connectivity, making sure that the speed is fast enough and we have enough bandwidth to handle all the wireless devices.
Another thing we looked at even today was we started looking at the potential, if we do go ahead with a south side solution and we do enhance the Lakeside property. Lakeside is the only school that is not connected to our network. We spend $3,000 a month for relatively slow internet speeds to that school. We could eliminate that cost if we ran fiber down to the school. We've already gone through, we have the plans for that, we know how to do that. That would be a big advantage to us. Now, one of the things that is a concern to me is long-term, I'd like two ways out of the district for the internet. Coincidentally, I think the university and Fox Valley Tech would also like two ways out of the community for their internet. So there might be some occasion here where we can partner because they're geographically more condensed than we are. We have fiber going farther out in all directions than they do, and we have some dark fiber that maybe there's a good partnership there. So those are just some innovative things that we're going to want to take a look at.
And we have fiber going directly into a building they now own.
Yes, we do, absolutely. And we also overlay them at, I think it's Dempsey, which is where we pick up our internet. So as long as we touch, we can go ahead and make some advances along that way. Now, the technology plan, we use the DPI's new Google website-based system for our technology plan. It worked exceptionally well. It is such an improvement over what we used to do with paper. It's going to allow us to revise this plan annually as opposed to every three years being a very painful exercise. A lot of the resources are going to be live. Just about everything that is in here that you would ever want to know is located in one of those tabs, and we went through those, we won't go through those again with you, but just to say, you know, that is something we're going to highlight constantly. If people really want to get into the nitty-gritty of the research and actually read the exact studies, we've quoted, you can get them all right off of this site. So we tried to make a one-stop shop for everybody. The frequently asked questions, just for those who may be watching on TV, were submitted by Oshkosh residents, staff and board members. They're related to technology use in the classroom, and they really focused on the border-proofed tech plan and the border-proofed goals inside the plan. So that is what we've done, is we've kind of tried to gather all these up. There were quite a few of them, but the good news is a lot of them we could put together in different categories because a lot of the frequently asked questions were asking some of the same things. The first question. The first question, there were actually three in there that we're getting largely at research, so I'll let you guys start out.
Okay. So question number one, what does the research say about the benefits of providing students with personal technology? What difference should we be seeing once we have successfully implemented increased access to technology? And should we expect to see benefits to student engagement, discipline and drop rates, et cetera?
Now, an example of some of the research we added at the last minute is because some of the research came from some of you as board members. Back in March of 2013, the educational leadership was, oh, nice, you actually brought a paper copy. I don't do paper, so this is nice.
I get this in the mail.
I actually do as well, and I looked for it, but I couldn't find it. But I could find it online. So this was an entire issue that was really dedicated to technology-rich learning and the research around it. Now, we've tried to, with each of these research studies, really boil them down into the Cliff Notes version, but there's a lot of information there. The technology-rich schools up close was just one study where they focused on eight exemplary schools that had already done one-to-one, and what can we learn from those? Does this work or doesn't it? What are the goods, what are the bads? They found they had common goals. Number one was making learning more relevant, and that is how we get at a lot of the engagement issues and the behavior issues that we see with some of our less motivated students. You know, you can ask yourself, when you see a student who's in a shop class, for example, who may not be, I used to see this when I was a chemistry teacher. I might have a student who wasn't motivated very well inside my chemistry class, but they were just hitting it out of the park in the shop class or in FIAD or somewhere else that just hit with a natural tendency or ability that they had. It's because that was more relevant to their experience, and that was something they were more excited about. The personalizing piece that you heard here is designed to help kids and help the learning experiences be more relevant.
I guess I was wondering, can you speak a little more? When I was at WASB, this is one of the things I was talking about, in two of the breakout sessions that I went to, the talk of one-to-one with specific school districts was extremely relevant to what we were doing here, I thought, and I asked the same question of both of them, which was, how have you measured it? How have you shown the public? I said, you know, we're going to referendum, we want to show the public that what we're going to do is actually going to be successful and that there's going to be measured gain in some way. And one school district, to be honest, had really no answer of significance. The other one actually spoke about very specific things with test scores, grades, and the one that you're alluding to here, which was actually not necessarily disciplinary action, but basically classroom problems.
Discipline issues.
The number of referrals, or how often students are leaving the classroom.
Right, yeah. Number of referrals is probably a good way to put it, but exactly how I'm thinking of is lost in my head. They actually saw a decrease in student behavior problems, I guess is the way to put it.
Well, I've worked with a lot of districts that have done this, and it's not uncommon for them to have. I've seen districts that have said, you know what, we're not going to look at the student performance data because we're really implementing technology for a larger purpose, and we're going to talk about that. And then you have other ones that say, no, we're going to laser right in on reading and math scores, and we're going to implement technology to get to those. Well, what we kind of are doing is doing both. Not only do we anticipate seeing improvements in our standardized assessment scores as well as the other metrics that we measure, but there's more to it than that. You know, it's all of that plus, which is why we think it's a compelling argument. We have seen some anecdotal changes in the technology implementations we've done, but like I've said before, we have very few data points, and we've not provided much in the way of staff professional development to really light this up properly.
You're talking about Jefferson?
Yes, I'm talking about Jefferson. We've seen some increases in our DRA scores, but like we said, it's one data point. Now, we really didn't look deeply last year because Jefferson had some visitors last year, and they were pretty busy with quite a few kids last year, and it really was not the full one-to-one implementation for good reasons, but this was the year we figured we were going to hit it really hard and keep a very tight eye on it.
For clarification, we should say the visitors were sharing the facility with Oaklawn during construction.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the Oaklawn students were there as well.
They were not strangers.
It was a very busy facility with a lot of extra kids who did not have access to one-to-one while the Jefferson students did, so.
Can we see the data at Jefferson? Even, because it's explainable, if last year the DRA scores didn't go up, then we know why. But knowing that they're changing is helpful, and if they're not changing or they're going the wrong direction, then hopefully we have a reason on how we can improve that. I think that might even...
Do we have enough years?
We're three years in, right?
I was going to say, I know we visit some personalized learning schools in Milwaukee area, and when you went in there and toured the schools, it was interesting because I didn't see any behavioral issues, and so I asked about, do you have a PVD program here? And they said, yeah, but since they've come here, they've actually, they don't have to go into the room at all anymore because they are able to stay in the classroom. And they were, one of the schools was saying, we're going to bring our most severe students over next year because we believe that once they're in this environment, that they won't have to have the PVD services any longer. So that was really intriguing and interesting, and being in the classroom, you really didn't know, you had no idea who might be.
What would you, or, well, I guess it's probably more a question to you than to you, I suppose, because...
I like that.
Well, the question is, how many years of data do you need in order to feel that you have a adequate representation or that you could, I mean, yeah, you know, if it went up one year and then the next three years it goes down, you can't base it on that one year.
Correct. And actually, if we can hold on to FAQ series number two, we're going to hit like all those data points and trends, et cetera. I'm going to talk about that if we can hold on to FAQ number two.
Sure.
Okay.
Getting back to our study of the schools that they took a look at, making learning more relevant, of course, providing new opportunities to close achievement gaps was another one of the common goals that, those are the reasons they did it. Now, they didn't, the achievement gap gets at the, some of the standardized test scores. The improvement in graduation rates, college and career readiness, that's part test score, part learning experiences that students would go through. This was a quote there, "Go with to educate students for work and life in the 21st century, not just to add technology." In fact, if you look at the one-to-ones that have not done well, it's because they focused on just getting the tech out there, and they haven't focused on the pedagogy, they haven't focused on the teaching and learning activities, they haven't focused on the teacher. Because in the end, the teacher's the fuel that's going to make this work. And that's why we were so strenuous about the idea of getting technology coaches in place in addition to this. Some common things that we saw, reliance on problem-based learning, that was huge, which was part of the reason why they saw the decrease in behavioral issues and increase in engagement and motivation, because the problem-based learning was far more, there's more than one solution to the problem, and cultivating an environment where kids are finding those solutions to the problem always brings out the best work in our students. Kids don't learn well when they just pair up what we tell them. They learn well when they have to create and solve problems. These are machines that help us amplify humans' ability to create and solve problems. Distributed school leadership that is 100% behind the infusion of technology, that is absolutely true. If you have leadership that is not behind the technology piece, it's going to be, because this is going to be challenging, you know, that was one of the things that, Chris is hearing that, but at Jefferson, you had to have, the reason they were the first one-to-one schools is because A, they got a grant, and B, at that time it was Julie Skelton and then Krista Hully Rogers, they were both all in with it, because you're going to have issues and the issues are going to come up, and you have to have an administrator or leader that is saying, you know what, we're going to work through these issues, we're going to be positive. First example was Mooresville School District in North Carolina, about 5,300 kids, they do one-to-one in grades three through 12, which coincidentally is our plan. Their high school test scores rose 68% to 88.5% proficient, which is quite significant. Their quote was, "Besides immersing these teenagers in using the internet for research, these projects call for critical thinking and sustained collaboration." The collaboration piece is another big component. When you go to some of these and you read these articles, you find out that they are creating, they're blowing the walls apart, and they're creating large collaborative groups. They almost look like think tanks. In fact, I think that was the word that was actually used in the article. Students work a lot harder now than when it was lecture and notes.
Is that associated with flipped classroom then as well?
Some.
A large flipped classroom.
You're not sitting in a lecture as often.
Right.
You are, you may, it's still going to occur that we're not going to get rid of what you see in classrooms today, we just may deliver it in a different way, and that may reserve our classroom time to be doing some things where I, you know, as a teacher, I could be working with the kids. Example two is Inver Grove Heights, Minnesota. I don't know if Sam knows anybody there? He does? It does not surprise me. The district had funding issues. They had a really hard time getting one-to-one in. They used challenge-based curriculum to turn around, alternative that program for their at-risk students, very similar to the story that you heard Kim Brown share. The third example they used was New Tech High School in Napa, California. The classrooms represent think tanks with multidisciplinary approach. You weren't just in bio class, you were working with the biology teacher as well as the FIAD teacher on a similar multidisciplinary project. And they talked about the kids using the technology 24/7 to do research, communicate, write and analyze data. You can see study after study after study, and these are a lot of the commonalities. This is interesting. The district moved to cloud computing, high-end Wi-Fi and one-to-one for success. Well, we got two out of three. This plan will deliver the third. Lastly, this I found, I'll put all eight up there, but these are what they came up with as the eight keys to tech integration. First one is revise your curriculum to promote 21st century knowledge and skills. We're in process to do that now, and you're going to hear from some examples here of where we've already done it. Provide ongoing differentiated PD, that's the tech coaches piece. Focus on making the school culture more collaborative, that's certainly, one of the advantages Oshkosh has is we have a great deal of collab time already, and we already have a culture of collaboration. This will only make that better. Identify realistic, sustainable funding sources. That's why we're going to referendum, is to have a realistic and sustainable funding source to do this. Number five, provide good tech support for teachers. We've been making heavy inroads into that area. Ensure that schools have strong and distributed leadership. I think that is something that's going to be an ongoing goal for us. How do we distribute the decision-making capability with a lot of this out into the buildings and allow for the innovation to occur? Once you establish the infrastructure and you give them the tools, then let it cook. Let's see what happens. Having a clear vision for where technology integration is headed, that's part of this group's job, is to look over the horizon and find out what we don't want to buy, what we don't want to put in the hands of kids, what's going to have the longest lifespan and give us the best bang for the buck. And lastly, forge partnerships with families, universities, communities and businesses. That's something else that, you know, just look at the community school. We have all of that in our DNA, we just haven't synced it all up before.
And the next piece that you've seen before is the Castle Brief, and one of the big thought leaders in technology education is Scott MacLeod, and he's one of the primary authors on this. And just taking a look at things like your traditional achievement scores, positive effects that we see with achievement that is demonstrated in your areas of literacy, science, exam scores and GPAs in particular, writing skills show the most immediate and significant positive result because students were able to work on writing in that non-manual way, and it shows improvement. One piece that we don't have up there but is highlighted in the study, some of you are asking about specific data. In the state of Maine in 2002, they implemented a statewide middle school laptop program, and when their results were looked at, there were significant results... And when their results were looked at, there were significant results that were gained by students. And here's kind of the more telling part. The longer that they were exposed to being able to use the technology and that change in pedagogy by teachers, the better the results got. So that's something that we look forward to seeing.
The next slide talks about those additional benefits of going one-to-one. The student engagement, attendance, behavior, motivation all showed positive gains. Teacher practices also showed improvement. So teachers became more innovative with their instructional models. Students attending one-to-one schools were much more satisfied with school than students in the control group. So students were sent to the office less and were suspended less than those students in a control group. Eighty-three percent of the teachers indicated students were more engaged in one-to-one setting, and 71% said they were more motivated with the technology.
And just a reminder, this was 29 studies, a study of 29 different specific studies geared at one-to-one schools that had been using it for a while. So this is probably the most comprehensive look and probably the most important one to share with you.
Also with our additional benefits, the educational experience changed because there's a decrease in that independent seat work that doesn't work well with students. It can sometimes work well for teachers, but doesn't work for students. And by engaging in these high-interest, high-engagement activities, the students respond to that very well. Also, we see a lot more project-based learning. And again, that problem-solving learning that we want to use. But also, we start to see teachers playing a role as a coach instead of just always being the deliverer of the curriculum. They're coaching students on how to find some of that information and then use that information as well. There's a decline in the use of that direct instruction. And it doesn't go away, like we talked about with the flipped classroom. It might just get delivered differently. And kind of added benefit, oftentimes it's shortened up. We give kids smaller bursts of information instead of a 40-minute lecture. It might be a five-minute lecture on one concept, not everything that we intend to cover in that week.
You know, the other advantage of that is you've all been in classes, I know I have, where the person who's teaching me, "I got it. I'm ready to move on." And we keep going over it over and over and over again. I've also been in rooms where I didn't get it, and it's been presented twice, third time. And I'm not going to ask a fourth time because I'm definitely the outlier in the room. With the advantage of a flipped instruction is, I can watch it eight times if I want to, you know, and that is a big advantage to kids.
Teachers lectured less, much more of that group work. But here's another key piece, increase in teacher collaboration. Because you're talking about putting the devices in the hands of our students as well as our staff. And when staff have more access to this, we see it already where you have made devices available to us. Teachers are collaborating more and more, both inside the workday and outside of the workday as well, because they can.
In fact, all of us were messing around on this last night. And you could see, that's kind of the fun part of Google Apps. I could see somebody was down there editing Slide 22 while I was up editing Slide 10. And, you know, it's very easy. It's a built-in environment where we can even chat live in real time while we're doing it.
And actually, a personal example, just the other night, my son was on his iPad, and he's working away, and I go, "What are you working on?" And he goes, "My partner, I, we're editing our presentation for tomorrow." And so he's sitting in the lazy boy chair editing his presentation along with his partner off of Google Drive. And then that was like at 9:30 at night, so.
Excuse me, some of the people who have spoken to me don't doubt that there's research out there. And while you were presenting, this took me back a few years to a program that had gained some traction in education some years ago, quite a few years ago, called Cooperative Learning. And there were folks who went around the country, and they tried to get other people to get on board with this concept, where you'd have sometimes two or more teachers with their classes together. And everybody seemed to have their own operational definition of cooperative learning. And some people seem to think that if you just put people together, that was cooperative learning. But that was not, according to the folks who did the studies, provided the research, had actually worked with real students in real classrooms, some of them in Minnesota and some in Wisconsin. And so I don't doubt that there's research out there, and it's impressive research. I think what people are asking me is, how is this research going to translate into specifically, what's the plan, what's the implementation plan in Oshkosh? What's it going to look like in terms of what kindergartners are going to be able to do with this? And what a 10th grader is going to be able to do with this? And they also usually come around to the idea of student learning. If we want the same results as from these research studies, then we pretty much have to implement them in that way. If you tweak them too far, you're not going to get the same results. And as Dave pointed out, you can't just simply give the device to the teacher and say, "Go for it." That's not going to work. And I understand you've got tech coaches coming, and I suspect this is kind of like devising the plan as you're driving down the highway 65 miles an hour trying to change the tire. You're trying to get all these pieces together as you're moving in a direction toward a goal to accomplish some of those, not some of those, all of those that you had presented earlier. So the specifics, we don't need them tonight. But at some point, there needs to be a plan that can be shared with the public and with the board on what this is going to look like and what results we can expect.
And you'll get a good chunk of that tonight.
Good.
In fact, you'll get most of that this evening. You're going to see some examples where we're already doing that, what it looks like. You're going to hear from people who are actually doing it, and you're going to be able to see what it looks like. What we're really using the research for is so that we do implement it with fidelity, so that we do take best practice. You know, the one advantage Oshkosh has, and it's the one time it is an advantage, is we're, as you're going to see, we're kind of last at the party. And the advantage of being last at the party is that you get to learn from everybody else's experience as you go in there. And that's something that we're doing, and that's why we've done so much research behind this, to say, "Here's the path." You know, the first path is to establish a solid infrastructure, a solid body of infrastructure so you can support what happens. The second path is to start developing your teachers. That's step two to this. Develop your teachers, get them going on this. The third step is you get the community, and you as advocates for the community, to buy into a vision of where you're going to go with the tools. Are you going to provide them and in what fashion? And then the very next step is, okay, now that you've said, "Yes, we're going to do this," then what we do is we say, "Now we have everything we need to totally adjust the instruction." And we've done some of that because we've been able to get some trailblazers out there doing it. But that is the sequence of events that will do it. Now, what we think will happen is we think you'll see these traditional learning benefits, the non-traditional learning benefits. And probably the best thing is, we're going to be creating a learning environment that's more going to match what our kids are going into than what we ended up learning from. And that's, I couldn't say it any simpler than that. But we do have a couple of other pieces.
All right. Another thing that we've taken a look at as a team is a book called Personal Learning Networks. It's a slogan that many of us are familiar with because we as professionals have created professional learning networks for ourselves, where we have connected with other professionals so that we can find out what's happening, not only in our own district, but in other districts, and we can have that broader conversation. But this really addresses how those personal learning networks need to translate into how we educate our students, so that we are creating the same types of experiences for our students in our classrooms that we seek out professionally as adults. And so this is a list of what they constitute as a 21st century education. So we hear the term 21st century education a lot. We hear about 21st century learners. And it was interesting because when we saw Rob Mancavalli at the SLATE conference as the keynote speaker, he kind of had a chuckle about what they might say in 2813 about what 21st century learning is, but we're figuring it out. And so the first one talks about the proficiency with current tools of technology. So that's addressing the notion that students are able to perform certain tasks with the technology that's in their hands. That really simply lays the foundation for all of the teaching and learning that can take place with those tools. So it's not the end goal. It's laying a foundation so that they're able to make the most of the tools that they have. The next one talks about building cross-cultural relationships to solve problems, reaching out to not only members of the community, but members of the greater global community, kind of crossing borders and connecting with people from different cultural backgrounds and experiences. The next one talks about designing and sharing information for global communities. So once those connections have been made, how can we be sharing out information and making sure that the things that we're learning about, the things that we're researching are for a greater audience? The next one, managing, analyzing, and synthesizing multiple streams of simultaneous information. They are constantly being bombarded with messages and information. And in a society where they don't have to go searching for information, it becomes really crucial to teach them how to manage that information stream and critically analyze what's being presented to them. So that's a key part of that education. The next one, creating, critiquing, and evaluating multimedia texts. So evaluating the validity of sources that they're presented with. And then the last one is acting ethically with these technologies. So knowing that we have all of this in the palm of our hands and knowing that we have access to a greater global community, what is our responsibility as learners and contributors when we're using that technology?
You know, when we heard him speak, he gave a couple of real examples of kids who had actually gone beyond their school and had started connecting, started their own businesses, even as high school students, and are wildly successful. And they were using the, and what they did is, they did it in spite of their school district. They didn't do it because of their school district. They did it because they had an ability to do an end-around, an antiquated education system that they were sitting inside, and it worked very well. This type of education is frankly impossible without technology. You can't do any of that, I mean, clearly, without having technology access. You're stuck inside the four walls of your classroom. So that's a big push.
The final takeaway from this piece we wanted to share with you was this conversation around the digital divide. And it really gets down to the heart of this whole idea of our technology plan, being that the technology, the digital divide used to be about the haves and the have-nots with technology. Now we know that those devices are accessible to students, that we're using them every day in our lives. But it's really now talking about the divide between those of us using the technology to enhance the learning opportunities for students and those of us just having the technology. So that's really at the core of the planning that we're doing and what that would look like for our students here in Oshkosh.
And he uses the term, "There are so many people who are just digitizing 20th century curriculum." You know, they're just, "Okay, now I'm showing it to you on YouTube." Yeah, I used to have a VHS tape of it. Now I'm showing it to you on YouTube, and I'm using technology. Well, that's really not what it is. It's really about the learner's experience, not about the information that's coming their way. And this I just put up there because it's interesting. You're starting to see more of this, and this is more from an infrastructure perspective. You're seeing districts talk about X to one. They're going beyond one-to-one, two-to-one, three-to-one. In fact, our network is built for three-to-one. We've had to do that because so many kids are bringing so many different devices. And most of them are small cellphone-type devices. But the idea of using one device, well, we don't use one device, you know, and we would not expect the students to do that as well. So we built an infrastructure that can handle that.
All right, so getting into frequently asked question grouping number two is about, is about the data and student learning. So these are the four that are wrapped up in this bundle. How will we quantify student performance before and after implementation of one-to-one? How will improvements in student learning be measured? What is the district's education plan? And what is the plan to modernize our curriculum, scope, and sequence if we were able to provide students with technology tools at each grade level? So starting with this is that in the Oshkosh Sherry School District, we use a variety of assessments, both formative and summative. And so when we're talking about formative assessments, we're talking about assessments that teachers are using in the classroom with their students. So they're using that information, and it's guiding the instruction, it's guiding the students' learning. And then the summative part is where at the end of the course, or maybe you can think of it as our standardized state testing, it's a dipstick in the time. And I think I've used this analogy before. It's the physical versus the autopsy, right? You get a physical, you get an annual physical, the autopsy's at the end. It's morbid, but it's a good analogy. But what we're going to do is, with any of our assessments, we're going to set that baseline. So we're going to say, "When are we going to start that measurement? When are we going to start that measurement? Where's our starting point?" And so for Jefferson, for example, we chose our starting point to start truly this school year, to start to look at our data, because other factors that we knew were going to impact student learning, were going to get in the way. So for Jefferson, we're starting this fall. So for our other schools, when we start to implement one-to-one, we will pick that time when we're saying, "We've got that." We're going to pick that as our starting point, and that's going to be our baseline where we're going to measure from there when it comes to assessments. So then, when we look at student performance, we're going to be using the same metrics that every other district in the state is using and that we're held accountable for. Because that's what we're compared to, and that's what we're using right now currently in the state to say, "This is how we are doing when it comes to reading, math, college, and community readiness." That's what we're being judged on. And if we're not doing this to improve student learning against those measures, then some of this is, "Why are we doing this? Why are we doing this if we don't think it's going to improve student learning?" The other piece of this is that the assessments that we are going to be using to indicate whether we are improving student learning and how our students are doing compared to other students within the state is going to be changing, and it's going to be changing starting this fall. And so in grades three through 10, all of our assessments are going to be computer-adapted. They are, students are going to be taking their assessments either on a Chromebook, in our school district, they're on a Chromebook, on an iPad with a wireless keyboard, or on a desktop. And so if we're not, if we don't have, it goes back to where Christie was talking about, teaching students how to do the baseline skills with those devices. If they don't have those skills, that's going to get in the way of assessing what they truly know and are able to do because they can't navigate the technology. And so I think that's imperative that we start to really put those into the hands. And so what we're talking about here is the Smarter Balance Assessment for grades three through eight. And nine and 10 is the ACT Aspire, once again, which will be delivered via technology or computer adaptive.
You know, and one thing to understand too is, let's say we don't do, let's say we didn't decide to do this. Okay, we're still going to have to do that computer-adapted test. Currently, we're using just straight computer labs, which pretty much, those will become just straight testing centers, which will knock off any access to the rest of the kids who are not being tested. So it really is, it will be a challenge if we don't have some sort of greater access to the students. And I frankly worry a little bit if they're not very comfortable with the technology, that that might bleed into the assessment scores.
And then as we start to look at data, it's going to be very interesting to see those school districts that are already at one-to-one or have already had devices in students' hands. For example, like Fond du Lac at the high school levels had one-to-one for two years now, two school years now?
Two or three.
It's going to be interesting to see what the impact is on their Smarter Balance or computer-adaptive assessments as compared to other districts that do not have that level of technology access. So that's going to be, that's going to be interesting. The other piece is that the Oshkosh Sherry School District is a standards-based district. Students or families are given feedback on how their students are doing, and their grades are reported to the Common Core State Standards in the English Language Arts and in Math, the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards in Science and Social Studies. And then in our elective areas, they're also being reported to, and they're given feedback to those standards within those elective areas, such as in music and PE and technology and engineering, et cetera. So we have built in there, we would hope, we should see students becoming more proficient when you look at their grades. And I believe in some of those research studies, they had talked about GPAs and increasing in grades, et cetera, going on. The other piece here is, they also indicate in this research study, and we do track behavioral data, engagement. So many of our schools, they are tracking how many office referrals, and we're trying to reduce that. Attendance, are students engaged? If you're engaged and you really want to be in the classroom, you are going to, you're going to be at school. And then also the suspension rates, et cetera. So really looking at those behavior and other engagement indicators. And the big thing here is, I always come back to priority area five in our strategic plan when we talk about the educational plan. And our goal right now, our mission is teaching and learning. We're building community through education. But goal 5D, to me, this is the powerhouse, and this is what I'm personally working on, and I'm helping and supporting everybody work on every day, is every student is college, career, and community-ready through partnerships with families, business, and community higher education. Students are not going to be college, career, and community-ready if we don't, if we're not putting these technologies in his hands and focusing on those 21st century skills. The next part of this is then, there was questions about curriculum alignment. In the district technology plan, you can go right to the tab where it says curriculum alignment. And so the first thing is the scope and sequence, and it's what students should know or be able to do. And that scope and sequence part is really the skills part, once again, that Christie referred to, is like, what is our baseline, like for keyboarding? What are we expecting students to do? How are they going to expect to attach a document, produce those very basic levels? And here's our action plan as far as establishing that scope and sequence. A little bit of this is, we're waiting a little bit to fully push this all the way out because we really want to know exactly what devices are we going to have? because we really want to know exactly what devices are we going to have in students' hands and to do professional development with our teachers because it's going to have a little bit different look if we go home book, laptop, notebook-wise versus tablet-wise. And so we're waiting just a little bit to see what that exactly looks like. So there are the action steps.
And it's also important to understand that if, if, if we get a, if we're fortunate enough to get a yes vote on April 1st, then we roll down the final steps in the plan. If we're not, we would be realigning our scope and sequence for educational activities that we can't do. It would be impossible for us to do. So it, it would be very difficult to do that.
The next piece is, is that when you start thinking about this, our base is the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards and the Common Core State Standards. That's, that's our base. And then from there, we lay on top the ISTI NAPs standards. Those are the technology standards. And then, you know, 21st century skills, career and life skills, we layer. You think of, think of each of those standards as layers and how they integrate together. Because no student is going to be going to technology class in the Oshkosh Shiri School District. That's not an authentic learning experience. That's not truly personalized learning. We're not showing students how to use those tools. So we are looking at meeting the Common Core State Standards through technology. We're going to lay those ISTI standards over the Common Core. We're going to make sure that teachers have the resources linked together with them and making sure that they have the toolbox. And we're going to inform that toolbox through professional development, collaboration, and having our tech coaches work directly with our teachers in the classroom.
I mean, you can imagine being a teacher today. There's, there's 10,000 different ways you could do something. There's 10,000 different tools out there. So part of our job is going to be shrinking their toolbox a little bit and say, okay, given your curricular area, at your curricular grade, in your various standards, overlay these types of activities, here are some, the best five technologies. It shrinks down the PD challenge. It also helps teachers get, that doesn't mean we're going to restrict them to that, but it's sort of a, you know, if you're teaching at this particular place, here's, here's some tools you may want to use that will hit at these various learning activities.
A common question I get is, does that mean that books go away? Does that mean that there's no longer paper and pencil? No, it's really giving students the, giving students the opportunities or they have the skills within them to decide, what's the best tool for the job? And sometimes if you, if you're, let's, let's say you're drawing and you're trying to be creative and sketching. Sometimes sketching needs paper and pencil to sketch. And so that's going to be the best tool for the job for what you want to do at that time. So don't, don't think those types of experiences are going to go away. It's going to expand the different opportunities or vehicles for learning.
Given Madison's current transient nature in regard to the fate and the status of public education in this state, are we going to be able to, when we outline what you're saying there, Dr. Ginnlock, about having, all right, these tools here would be within your particular curriculum area, the standards that you're setting and this kind of stuff. Is it possible to have it be somewhat rapidly adaptable to new flexible situations where the Common Core is here today? Who knows about tomorrow? Are they going to change this? It looks like they probably are. They're getting a committee. They're going to probably be raising standards off of that. Is there something that we, if we do go this route, that we can build a certain amount of flexibility into this, David, so that we're not redesigning the wheel at the whim of Madison? Because that's one of my concerns, and it has been about, I mean, I know we rushed into the Common Core thing. And now because of whatever, when, way the wind is blowing politically in Wisconsin on any given day, they might be removing that. And then, and of course, the local school districts are the ones, the local taxpayers are ultimately the ones that pick up the cost on this.
I have a little experience on using technology to design a tool. I was part of the group that designed Build Your Own Curriculum, which was a web-based curriculum management system. And the whole point of that system was to get at what you're talking about. Because remember, let's go back. This whole standards discussion is not a new discussion. There was Wisconsin Model Academic Standards, which, which were never designed to do what we were using them to do. Every district had their own local standards. So we, you know, technology allows us to much, much quicker align our curriculum. Because remember, the standards are not your curriculum. Curriculum is what you teach. It's your learning activities, it's your learning targets, what's going on each day in the classroom. The standards are over here, and that's where they build the assessments off of. So it is 100 times easier when you've, when you've linked this in with technology to say, okay, my, my learning activities in class align to these things called the Common Core. Okay? They go away tomorrow. Here's the new Common Core version two, or three, or four. Okay, my learning activities, now I'm aiming over at this and I'm realigning. And it probably is going to mean I'm going to need to make some minor changes, but not for 80% of what I do. When you look at what, what the Common Core brought in, it's changing some of the learning activities in the classroom. But it's all, there, most of those learning activities are staying the same, just they're being edited slightly. And I don't know, you can probably comment that better than I.
The Common Core is really the, the skills that we teach. It's the what. And a lot of what we're addressing with the technology plan gets at the how. And so, for example, if there's a Common Core standard that asks that students in my classroom be able to synthesize information from numerous sources, that's the what. What can they do? This really gets at the how. How are we teaching them to get at that learning target and synthesize multiple, or information from multiple sources? If the Common Core changes, we're not likely to see dramatic changes in terms of what students are asked to do. And the how certainly doesn't change. When we're looking at best practice in terms of teaching and what makes learners engaged, that's not going to change simply because the what changes.
Well, I understand, but that is all on the front end. And I guess my real concern here is on the back end. Because if we're really going to get into trying to effectively change the face of education as we know it, we need to be able to track data. And if the front end of the data is changing, are we going to be able to integrate this into our backend data? In other words, we have one-on-one right now in Jefferson.
Correct.
We have, and I understand the difference between curriculum and the Common Core standards. My concern is, is that if we keep jerking this around on the way things are tested and the way that data is collected, are we really going to get anything with any kind of definition on a long-term basis? Even something as small as three to four years where we could actually make a decent assessment on some of this?
A couple different points on this. I actually just was on an online webinar with, with DPI, and I'm going to, I'm going to send you a press release and a memo where Governor Scott Walker does, does support the Common Core. He's looking to maybe raise the bar, and he's going to put together a legislative review committee. But for the foreseeable future, those are going to be in place. There is no movement to change any of the, the assessment pieces, which is the Smarter Balance Assessment in grades three through eight and ACT Aspire and the, and the actual ACT for grade 11. And so those, those pieces aren't, right now, there is no, no foreseeable forecast that that's going to change. Currently, if you think about it, what we're really concerned about is the student learning right now in the classroom, and are they progressing from the beginning of the year to the end of the year? And where you're going to get data there is our internal district measures, you know, around reading, writing, within the curriculum. And so when our teachers are grading and reporting and giving their families feedback, so report cards just went out, like today, I believe it was, families are getting information about where are their students currently progressing towards those standards at the end of the year. And so they're going to be looking at the report card, and they're going to be getting a communication on, how is my child doing to meet, to be able to meet those standards at the end of the year? That's the important piece of data. And so where we're going to see, where we would hope to and where we predict we would see data movement is within that child's learning within that school year. So overall, like as a, as a, as a large district, we may look at big standardized test scores and may see movement that way as in a trend or in the district. But really where it hits the road is, do we see improvement in student learning in the classroom, in that child during that school year?
The other thing that is kind of being underplayed throughout all of this is how are teachers expected to analyze the data in a formative way? Because basically, they're the practitioners. So while they have the patient in front of them, how are they expected to make changes when they cannot necessarily access the data? I mean, I wind, wind back the clock. Remember the, the, because I certainly can't forget it, the, the board workshop where we kept hearing the issues people were having with our data systems? What was that about?
The spreadsheets.
Yeah.
Oh, the spreadsheets.
Exactly. The spreadsheets that disconnected, et cetera. The idea of handing a practitioner, I mean, think about it. When you go see the doctor, the first thing he walks in with is something where he can access all your information. We're going to be able to have that capability for our teachers too. And that's, that's the first thing on the list. The third group of questions was, what's the timeline to place the technology in each schools? Which schools would be first? How long will it take to get the technology into the schools? Which grade levels will receive the technology first and why? I think Dr. Herzog had the story of being to the Brat Barn and Festival and people raising money for things. And how am I, what am I going to tell them? This is when your stuff is coming. This is the easiest group of questions that I answer because this is the hardware stuff. This is, this is the what. This is what goes in. Now, I'm just showing this up here because this is the overall budgeting system. This was the easy piece to lay out. Because all we had to do is figure out, what are the categories? How much do they cost? How long do they last? And how much a year are you going to need? Now, the tough part is this part. Now, this is the rollout schedule. And it's too small for people to really read.
And that wasn't done on purpose.
That was not done on purpose. But it is important to see the depth of it. What I needed to do, and what the team needed to do, is sit down and say, okay, given, if you do have that dollar sitting in your hand, how do you get stuff into the hands on a schedule where you don't overload some years and you don't underload other years? In other words, to use the whole budget. And there's some assertions here. Given the tentative budget, it's impossible to add it all in one year. We're talking a total budget of about $2.65 million. Okay? That's, just adding the technology for the students would go way beyond that. So you can't do it all in one year. Research indicates the most effective system is to provide teachers the technology first, the embedded PD, along with time to assimilate. So teachers got to be first up. That's a given. Best practice is, and this, I can tell you this is best practice because we've gotten the advantage of it here in Oshkosh, and I did in a previous district as well. When you buy in bulk, you save a lot of it. All right, it's the Walmart method, okay? When we replaced our entire phone system, we got a big discount by doing, as opposed to saying, I'm going to do a building here, a building there, a building there. That's what we had done in the past in Oshkosh. Little bits along the way. That's very inefficient, very costly. So I wanted to set that up. So some of the purchases you can see up there are spread over two fiscal years. So we'll do them at the end of year A, at the beginning of year B. And the reason we do that is because we're going to buy at one time. Example, it's about one and a half million dollars to replace the switch infrastructure in Oshkosh. That's if I get a good deal. If I do that and spread it across two years, I still do it on one PO. It's just we break it up at the end of fiscal year A, beginning of fiscal year B. I can get all the equipment in at one time, and it's, it's at a great cost savings. Lastly, the annual license and software budget supports software as a service. The budget we have in there is really purchasing services. When you look at Infinite Campus, Google Apps, Camtasia, Safari Montage, all of these are subscription-based services that we, that we spend to bring those software in. So here's our schedule. 2013-14, the classroom tech purchased, this is this year, will be used across all of the schools and grade levels. In other words, we're focusing on the classroom tech right now. And that is something we're going to be going out to RFP in in probably the next four weeks. And what we're trying to do is get our classrooms healthy. I can tell you right now, they are not. Our high schools have had sporadic technology, most of it grant-funded. But our, our LCD projectors are old. They're failing. The bulbs are expensive. We're, we're looking at trying to get a common set of technologies so teachers don't have to worry about, oh, I'm in this classroom, it doesn't have any.
Or you're in schools that don't have any at all.
That, that as well. I was presenting to the Oakwood PTO about six months ago. And this was after Trager's grant was publicized and West's grant was publicized. They wanted to know, because I live in the Oakwood attendance area, they wanted to know once it come to them. And I, I, you know, these are grant applications. They were very interested in these schools because of their specific demographics. I can't dictate when that happens. They want to know when they're going to be at the table. So this is, this is part of that. So getting that healthy for all schools. 14-15, as I said, we provide teachers with their devices. Invented PD to continue scope and sequence and learning activity changes. That will occur over the, I want to get this right, 14-15 school year. Wi-Fi infrastructure upgrades would be initiated at all schools. And that would be upgrading to handle the increased traffic. We're pretty good right now, but we're going to have to upgrade a few things. 15-16, students in grades nine through 12 will receive the technology. Okay, that's about 3,000 students will receive devices at West and North High School. Servers and storage systems will need to be replaced at that point because we replaced those back in 2010. Wi-Fi infrastructure upgrades should be completed at all schools. Notice there, the Wi-Fi spans two years. 2016-17, students in grades six through eight get it. About 2250 kids, give or take. Network switch equipment is initiated. That'll be at the end of the 16-17 school year. In 17-18, students in grades three through five will get the technology. Another 2250 kids. Network switch equipment upgrades will be completed. We fast forward to 2018-19, staff laptop replacements. That's a small amount, actually. Card-based technology replacement in grades K2 with one card per grade level. That's, that's, remember, the original budget was set for about $2.6 million. We dropped it down by a, by a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. So what we did is at grades K2, we are not handing students a individual device. They will still have access, very similar to what they have today in some schools. But that is, that is something we felt was an acceptable change to the plan where we're still able to hit all the goals. And remember, they're K2 kids, so we're going to catch them as they go up. Which is part of the reason why we started at the seniors and worked our way back down. So none of our kids, because if we reversed it, some schools have done that. They start at the early grades and work up. You're going to be graduating years and years and years of kids before you ever see the benefit from any of this.
The only question I have is what percentage of our kids in nine through 12 already have some kind of a device?
Well, most of it. I would say most of them have some kind of device, but it's usually this. It's usually, it's usually a smartphone-type device. And that is the vast majority of what we see coming into our network because we monitor all that. Whenever they hook up to our Wi-Fi, we capture what it is you're coming with.
How many kids have laptops? Do you know?
I would say even in our most affluent classrooms, we have a very small percentage of kids that have a personal device that is adequate for completing coursework. Most of them are coming in with a tablet or something that allows them to access information, do very informal research. But in terms of actually getting coursework done, we, we might have one or two kids per 30.
Right. So it does become a big equity issue for us as well. Classroom technology replacement, location determined by age of equipment. Now, the classroom tech piece, if you'll look at, if you really want to see the grid and see it in all of its, its glory, the classroom tech piece is the hardest one. But that's also the easiest one to be flexible with because we can do it based upon the age of the equipment. The IP phone system will need to be replaced in 2018-19 because it will be at that point ready for a replacement. 2019-20, it sounds weird saying that. But our Wi-Fi infrastructure will be initiated. The mobility infrastructure, that's the backend stuff that makes it work. Servers and storage system will be replaced. And students in grades nine, start to sound familiar. Students in grade nine through 12 will be provided with technology. So we'll refresh that technology. That'll be the first time we do that. 2021, that's the last year of the referendum, if I, if my numbers are right. Wi-Fi mobility will be completed. The classroom tech replacement, a little bit more will be replaced at that point. The classroom tech replacement, a little bit more will be replaced at that point. Students in grades six through eight will then be provided with technology. And we're getting into a cycle here. That's the end of the referendum resources. At this point, we will have copious amounts of data across all span. Because not only will we have our new data system, we'll have a data warehouse, one-to-one, we'll have a different scope and sequence. Everything will be running and we will have gone through one full cycle. And we will also have the data that we have today.
Right. And I believe I didn't answer Matt's question. How many years of data would form a trend? My rule of thumb is usually three. You don't want, you don't want to use, because within like two years, I mean, it takes two points to make a line. But you can have either an implementation dip or you could have like an artificial spike. So at the minimum, you need three years of data to say success, not a success, or we're seeing a trend.
And I would fully expect us, like every other organization, to have an implementation dip.
But you don't see the three years of Jefferson as being consequential? The three, the three years of one-to-one that we have there?
Well, they're in, they got it at the end of what you would call year one. Let's just take year one.
The end of year, okay.
And then year two was long in there as well. And this year, we're starting to collect the data and we're seeing promising results. So I don't know if I really...
Understood.
But we will share that information with you regardless. You can take a look at, the data is what the data is. So we can take a look at that.
A couple of things, just to play devil's advocate. You had a slide up there earlier that said that the longer students are able to use technology, that the greater the advancement, the value is. It makes sense to sit there and start off the three through five and then go to the middle school and then go, but all right, that being said. My concern on this is, this is very, this is well thought out and this shows some sustainability and a nice lifeline here, timeline. Is there not a way to include special needs classrooms within their targeted, regardless of whatever grade level that they're in? Because the research I went through is that one of your biggest bangs for bucks is in special need programs. Could we not sit there, even if they're in fourth grade, that those, those kind of classrooms not be targeted in that first year?
Yep. Well, I can address that. Absolutely. Actually, one piece, when I was thinking about the data, is that you definitely see increased closure of achievement gaps when it comes for students with disabilities as compared to students with not disabilities. And that's because of the personalized learning of it, et cetera. Currently, that's exactly what we're trying to do is based on the student's IEP or this, you know, whatever the student's disability is, is by the way of providing accommodations, is getting that device or that tool in that child's hand so that it evens the playing field for them in the learning environment. So that's going to be done, that's going to be done regardless. And it's not only students with disabilities. It's our English language learners. It makes a world of difference to have an iPad in the hand of an English language learner where you can instantly translate. You can, you can bring up graphics and instantly start to build background knowledge for an English language learner. So absolutely. And that actually, I mean, within here, when we talk about 3,000 students, that's every student. It doesn't matter what, I don't want to say label.
That's all our special ed students as well.
That's every single student.
Now, they may have some technology over and above that as dictated by their IEP. And that may very well be, they may have that already.
Right. That's what, you said some of this is going on now.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And you'll see some numbers from that. We got some numbers to share.
Right. Absolutely. So.
Now, once the end of refer, you know, here's, here's one of the advantages and the big advantage of doing a seven-year referendum versus a permanent referendum. We get a chance to take this for spin and test drive. And after this amount of time, we get a chance to refine it. We get a chance to adjust it. Typically, hopefully, we'll be able to continue to do whatever the latest, greatest is for the same amount of dollars. But at this point, unless we had some, you know, we would anticipate if it's working, we'd probably come back and look at that again. Otherwise, what we would do is we'd branch it back to the plan, current Plan A levels that we currently have today. Existing tech would be removed once its end of life was breached. In other words, we'd actually shrink down. I've not found one district in all the studies I've read, not one, that has ever done that. So once they put it in, the improvements have been so grand that they've kept it and they just refined the process and kept going.
Speaking of other districts, you had kind of opened up this whole discussion with, we've been going one-to-one for about 10 years now. We've got 10 years of other places doing it. And so the question that I think I'd like to have answered, maybe not tonight, but eventually, is it's a lot of money. And how are we going to be sure that this is a success? In other words, I don't think that we're going to spend all this money and not have it be a success, okay? And I'm absolutely on board with tech. So, so don't take this question as a criticism. But how are we going to, could we take the places that have been doing this for 10 years that are similar to us demographically, latitude? I don't care, but you know, similar to us, around us, near us, that we can relate to them? Can we take some of their data and make some predictions? I don't want anybody to stick their neck out, right? I don't want us to stick our neck out and then, you know, have it get chopped off. But I think we do need to at least put something out there that says, we can't just say, well, it improves student performance. It just does. And people are going to say, well, what the hell does that mean? So we've got to maybe put a few, some more meat on that.
Right. At this moment, I'm a little bit leery of doing that. And the reason is, is back to what Steve was talking about. The whole, the whole assessment piece that would be standardized and that we could compare between districts is changing. And so smarter balance is coming in next year. And so we're no longer going to be able to compare the WKCE data from, you know, last year or the year before to what's going to be the assessment data that's going to come out of the smarter balance piece this coming year. And so not even knowing what the first year of data is going to look like for Oshkosh area school district students, like where, where we're actually going to be, like where that baseline is going to be. I'm very leery of predicting or putting out there, we're going to, we are going to shoot for a target 5% increase in reading scores in the 15-16 school year. I'm really leery of doing that because we haven't even seen the first year of data that's going to come out of smarter balance assessment, ACT Aspire. And then with ACT at the 11th grade, yes, we currently have students taking the ACT. But the issue is, is that our 11th graders haven't had any of this coming up to that point. And so it's, I mean, it sounds like we're trying, we're putting you off when it comes to data. But it's like, I really want to give you something that's accurate or realistic. And so throwing out there right now, we're going to increase reading scores by 5%, or math is going to go up by two. To me right now, I'm really leery of doing that because we just don't have the baseline to say, this is where it's going to start.
Could we at least say, well, in, you know, the neighborhood next to us, they, they saw reading scores increase by 5%?
Oh, like from, like here's their, yes. We could do that.
Maybe that would be helpful. I'd like to see that, just, I mean, I've seen what's happened in Maine and I've seen what's happened in Maryland and Massachusetts. And because of all those studies, but I'd like to...
You know, and I don't know who said it, but you're going to run into that same scenario is, is some districts are not being very intentional about that. Some are being very intentional. You know, we're going to be both. You know, we're going to be intentional about the data. I would fully anticipate we'll be the ones providing the data to other districts that are looking at doing this down the road. Because we're, the entire system that we have designed and your strategic plan is getting at that idea of building a solid data system prior to doing this. We're the perfect case of before-after. The only thing I wish is that we had the smarter balanced assessment for at least a year or two before we had done this.
Right.
I'm not advocating pushing this off. I'm just saying that, that would have been nice not to do a, do a gear shift on the standardized assessment in the middle of it. Because they're also going to need to rebalance their assessment. After the first year, they're going to find out, this thing may work really well. It may not work so well. And there's probably going to be some changes they're going to want to make. They get the same WKC one first year.
They may set the cut score at a certain point and then they get the actual assessment data back and go, oh, that's not where we felt that the cut score should be. And it's going to move up or down, so.
But it's, it is getting better. And it's getting a lot easier to be able to give you information that you've been asking for, at least since I've been here.
Well, I guess that's my assessment of this whole concept. You brought this up earlier about how that, you know, we're one of the last ones to the party. Remember in the 80s, early 80s, when automobiles first had computers put in them? And I used to pride myself on, you know, being able to fix cars. Had some pretty cool muscle cars from the 60s and 70s. Anyway, I'll just say this straight up, the 80s computers sucked. And nowadays, nowadays, the computers that are within cars have made them much more field-efficient, much more easy to detect a problem way early, way early on things. And I think that, I guess I equate that to the same thing with public education. If you are able to collect data on a child through technology in fifth grade and can maybe get some sort of predictables about where they're going to end up in 10th or 11th grade. I'm very encouraged by the dropout rate reduction that I've seen, which I would assume is a big indicator of student engagement. And of course, the whole special needs piece. I'm certainly supportive of this. I can understand somewhat your, if the data isn't out there, and that was my question before about, you know, going from WKC to smarter balancing. It's just, it just would be nice to have something in place where we could actually, when they just decide to do something like this, that they had a way that you could actually use that data from the two pieces and integrate it together to have some sort of affirmative assessment on this.
They probably will try and link up the resources and create some sort of crosswalk for scores. I can't imagine they probably won't try something like that. But it's, it's a turkey shoot, you know, what that's actually going to be like. The fourth set of questions got around the idea of cost efficiencies. Expenses we can reduce if we do this. Will there be a technology return on investment to reduce costs or increase revenue elsewhere? This is a great question. Just to remind you, that we do have some returns that we brought into the district. We're, are running clock on smart purchasing grant funding. We're over half a million dollars. North is the most recent school to receive a WTI grant for $75,000. So that brings a total of $554,000 to the grant-funded technology taxpayers in Oshkosh that we pay for. And so we've gotten a leg up. And we've also used this as R&amp;D, you know, to find out what works. What do we want to put in? What do we not want to put in? Without having to use our own budget resources. These are the ones that actually had a positive return on investment. You know, when we virtualized our servers, we went from 38 servers to two. Heartland did an analysis on our power flow and they analyzed $8,000 a year we're saving just in electricity. The savings by Google, going to Google Apps and Gmail, that was $47,000. Now, that's a very, actually, it's more than that. But I wanted to make sure when we first did this, that I didn't hand you any data that I couldn't, that I wasn't being overly conservative. And I think there's one thing you found out. I'm overly conservative when I'm doing data because I always want to be able to make sure it's better than what I show. The savings just using Google Sites, you know, $5,000 a year is what most districts are paying for their website. We don't pay anything for our website, other than some internal costs of us doing some of the design. Savings on backend servers by no longer necessary, which is about $20,000. The big one is our phone system. We projected $116,000 savings. I put in $100,000 because that's the actual amount I reduced our budget by from when I started to when I am today. But that gives us a total annual savings of $180,000. Our phone system will pay for itself in a span of three years. And it's a seven-year device. So we'll have, we'll have several years of that as well. So those are some of the return on investment pieces.
I'll talk about this. A common question is, is, well, you won't need textbooks anymore, so you can, you know, you can cut your textbook budget. Well, students are going to be walking around probably with less textbooks. So the complaints about really heavy backpacks tipping over, you know, smaller children, we're going to have less, less of those and hopefully, less back problems. But when we talk about this, it's more about, we are still going to be allocating resources to curriculum materials or instructional materials. But those instructional materials are going to look different. So instead of having a paper, you know, a paper book or a paper subscription, we're going to be, I mean, the textbook companies and our entrepreneurs out here in the United States are well onto this. That it's, you may not be purchasing the textbook anymore, but you're purchasing the ebook resource. And it's, and it's the same price. And so you really, you end up purchasing the content. Or for example, we may be purchasing apps. Because there, absolutely, there's free apps. But then we also know that there's apps, that there's been a lot more research behind it, a lot more development behind it, that's aligned to Common Core state standards or the instruction that we, that we want to have here in the Oshkosh area school district. So of course, we're going to end up having to pay for the services. So it's not that that budget's going to go away. It's going to be allocated in different ways. The other piece is, is that we may not be purchasing those services from a vendor. We may be tasking our teachers, or our teachers are going to say, hey, we want to develop our resources. An example, once again, is this summer, our social studies teachers in sixth through ninth grade did a primary source bootcamp with UW Oshkosh. And they put together Google Sites with all their resources in there. Thus, we didn't, at this cycle right now, we didn't purchase new social studies textbooks because we are looking to use those primary sources or those authentic sources when we're teaching our social studies units. So we paid our teachers to develop the resources.
Guy in La Crosse right now is doing a lot with iBooks. And they have people using Free iBooks Author to generate. Now, these are, this is different than just a PDF. You know, a lot of times people say, oh yeah, we have a digital textbook and it's a PDF. Well, okay, thank you so much. That's not really what we're talking about. I'm talking about something that has live links to real resources, 3D animations, everything that the students can manipulate in real time. That it actually goes back to some live data about population or about pollution. You know, those are examples of engaging true iBooks that are, that are out there. And iBooks happens to be an Apple product. But I know they're continuing to do more and more resources that are digital, that are loading on devices similar to what you have, that are far more effective with kits. The other thing is potential revenue gains from becoming a regional technology professional development center. We've talked about that. That's kind of been our vision. You know, anybody who's doing innovation, they never start out with a small vision. They start out with a big vision. And our vision would be to take the event city to a whole new level. And we're thinking of being the educational event city. And we sort of took it for a ride at the Fall WTI conference when we had 400 people come in here. And they had an amazing experience. And that was done mainly by our folks, our teachers, who had, in my view, almost no technology when you compare them to other districts around us. And they were able to hit it on a par. So when you look at that, it is not out of the realm of possibility to say that, you know, Oshkosh, look, we got a university here. We got an amazing teacher college. We got Fox Valley Technical College. And we have the Oshkosh area school district. What a bigger powerhouse do you need to create a technology professional development center? And that could bring in revenue. You know, so as we start doing these things, you know, all the questions you've had tonight. You can imagine if you're a board member in Appleton, Green Bay, wherever, and you're asking these very same questions and Oshkosh is providing the training, and that's where you go to get the answers. That could be something that would be very compelling. The other thing to remember is that the big potential is the positive or negative revenue change linked to enrollment and open enrollment. Currently now, as of the, I just pulled the 2013 data. We're 15th in Wisconsin for losing kids. We're at minus 132. That's not a good statistic to be. We are a bigger district, so it's not quite as bad as like a Kakana that loses, I don't remember the number, but it's, I think it's 400. You know, and they're much smaller than we are. It's a crisis for them, clearly. At the current rate of 66.35 per student, I like to be accurate, OSD taxes support other school districts in the amount of about $875,000 a year. We packaged that much of our taxes up and we sent it to Fond du Lac and Winnie County and Amro and Appleton and Grantsburg and McFarland and all these other places. Part of that, we've designed our E-Academy to get at keeping some of those kids, maybe bringing some back. In order to recoup the referendum across, let's say you said, I want this referendum to pay for itself. How do we do that? Well, we need to capture our 132 kids that we lose and 87 more. And that would be a net swing of 219. Which, to be honest, is not crazy. That is not, not something that would be impossible. Especially if you look to the north of us. Appleton, for example, is a net positive of, I believe, over 1,000 kits. That means they pull in seven to eight million bucks a year in extra revenue. And I think we have some advantages that we could leverage. Here's the other thing, though. It's also important to consider the reverse. Because we're out there discussing this with, with our public to say, okay, this referendum is more than the 1.45 on technology. It's two and a half million dollars of operations to keep us from becoming an outlier. Take a look at Racine School District. Where Racine was in '02, '03, you know, we're about a net loss of about 121. Look how fast they got to a net loss of 1,000 kids. You know, that, to me, is the story here. If we don't provide an educated service to our customer, the same as our customers' competitors, they can go elsewhere for the service. And clearly, that happens at school districts. The one reality of education in Wisconsin right now is there's going to be more choices for parents. What we're trying to do is make us the choice. We want to compete in that market space, because I think if we do, we're going to do very well.
I don't know how you do this, but that's not what I need to know, I guess. But a lot of the questions that we've posed, though, in the past few weeks have not necessarily come from us. It's come from all the people we talk to. And so, I don't know necessarily if it's us that you need to convince. Somehow, we have to get the community educated and aware. I don't know how you do that, but what I hear when I sit around tables at basketball tournaments all weekend is, I need to know, I need to know what I'm investing in with this referendum. I need to know exactly where my money's going and why. I need it spelled out, and they don't. They don't know. It's too vague. We are getting a better idea, and you've been gracious to show that, share that information, but it's not getting out there to the people who are going to be voting or considering an increase in their taxes.
And I think that's true of actually both sides of the dollar amount, not just the one point four five, but the two point five as well needs to be explained, I think, to a greater detail, or this referendum is going to be in trouble.
The, two weeks from tonight, you will have at your table, on the twelfth of February, you will have the co-list of what that two point five million dollars means in instructional delivery system. And that is the process that begins next week with our reconciliation committee, Budget Reconciliation Committee gathering, because the list of the periphery cuts that have been in the history of the district have been exhausted. And the content will be instructional, and will have to be instructional, because everything else has been gone. And answering that question of what's the impact will be very clear in two weeks.
I think it has to be crystal.
But we need to go through a process appropriately to get through that. And so, on the twelfth of February, in Board Work Session, the Board will have that full list of, that composite of what is the impact, what would be missed, and how can we avoid that Racine issue? Because we will be in a position without any choices to effectively make us unattractive.
Well, I think Kelly's point, though, is, yes, on the twelfth of February, we will be getting this information on the two point five and what it's going to actually entail. This needs to be on the Oshkosh Area School District Facebook site. This needs to be on the Oshkosh Area School District website, and along with the Budget Reconciliation stuff. And it should actually probably be placed, I don't know if we could do that, really, in one of the television shows that we've been putting out, but if...
Well, there's no reason to wait for the twelfth for this portion. If we've got it, let's...
Well, this is the portion that I'm getting the most questions about.
We need to get the information out there to the public.
And this is where you guys, bringing these questions forward, have done us a tremendous service. And you've done the referendum a tremendous service, because what you did is you went, this is what boards should be doing. You've captured, co-listed all this. You shotgunned it to us and said, okay, this is what we're hearing, let's get these answers out. Now, we had answers to a lot of these, but what this really did is allowed us to clump together things that were starting to boil up as concern areas, and then generate frequently asked question slides. You know, I got to tell you, this was a lot of work to put together, as you can imagine. And it was a lot of work while we were trying to create the referendum slides over on the other side, but it so is making the referendum slides on the other side that much better. And honestly, this is a very positive exercise for us to all go through, because it's allowed us to really put a laser focus on all of that. Now, we'll get out in front of the community in countless sessions, and that's very similar to what we did with the Oklahoma referendum. You know, it's same situation. We'll get that message out, and we will have answers to all those questions. And there's going to be more questions that you can even bring up, that are going to come our way, and we'll get the answers to those as well.
I would suggest you use that Racine piece there is very telling. I mean, it might just be that they were trying to get farther away from Chicago, but I mean, that if this... I mean, if that is reflective of districts in general, I mean, it's...
Well, those are lost in state of Wisconsin. Those are missing kids who are going to Kenosha or surrounding communities.
And if that's happening there, and it's happening in Kakona and that kind of stuff, I mean, it's very certain.
And if they went south, there are a lot of pretty wealthy suburbs of Chicago that are a lot of good choices on the way there.
Well, I know you're not finished. This has been extremely helpful, and we've been a very captive audience. When you go out to school groups or service clubs, they're not typically going to provide you with over an hour or so. You know, we've got people who get impatient when they put something in the microwave for ten seconds. So, somehow, this is going to have to be distilled or boiled down to some simpler talking points that are laser-like in terms of communicating the specific information that will answer questions that people have out there. And there will be people who will want the detail that we've had tonight, which I found to be very helpful, so I appreciate your putting this together.
But you're right, there are also going to be people who show up at the grocery store and ask me questions. And I'm going to need to, in a very short period of time, while waiting in line to check out...
We need soundbites.
Well, but be able to communicatable, I mean, they can't just be a slogan soundbite. You know, it has to be, has to be something that's actually communicating the most pertinent data in as short of a...
What you haven't seen is version, we're already on version, no, really, version three. I call it two point one, but version three of the referendum PowerPoint. Version one, I thought, was beautiful. I put all this tiny, it was like this, it was just really cool. I thought it was great. And then we get somebody to take a look at it and said, yeah, throw that out, move that out of there. Too much information. I went, this is really good stuff. They said, yeah, it's good stuff, but nobody, you're going to need a much more...
Condensed.
Condensed version that hits it hard, very similar like that Appleton video that was out there for a quick three minutes. We can't go more than three minutes, or you're going to lose them. And we'll have that, and then if you want to go deep, we'll have that.
Right. And hot off the presses, as of ten-thirty this morning, we have the one-page, one-side short version of our learning levy. Please vote on April first, two thousand and fourteen. So, this is hot off the presses. So, we're working on it.
Probably a ten-minute presentation, a thirty-minute, an hour-long presentation, and you decide which one. And we'll be able to do it that fast. And then having all the other associated materials as well. We're almost done. Couple other questions that you had sent was, what are other districts doing about this?
So, if you look, at least thirty-seven districts have reported resourcing one-to-one initiatives. This was from the DPI. Example districts include Pulaski, Wanakee, La Crosse, Pawaki, Waukesha, Stevens Point, Sun Prairie, Wapon, Chaboygan, Green Lake, Ripon, Nina, Manasha, Appleton, Fond du Lac, and more. And if you'll note, the last ones mentioned are within driving distance from Oshkosh.
So, we're surrounded, very much.
What do we do if the equipment is damaged or stolen, what's been a track record with the technology we already have provided to students? So, students, as we know, carry very expensive equipment, other than technology, like their musical instruments and things already, so it's not a precedent for them to have expensive things that they're going to and from school with. One-to-one districts are reporting very low incident of breakage and loss, even when the students take their devices home. And what we've seen so far in our district mirrors what the other districts are reporting. There are some insurance options that we could investigate to cover breakage and loss and with potential fees, depending on what the board decides they would like to do with that.
And a lot of districts have some track record doing that, and that's one of those where we're not going to reinvent the wheel, we're going to talk to Fond du Lac, we're going to talk to Janesville. Janesville, right now, has a real intriguing deal with somebody for a very cost-effective breakage warranty that, you know, you can even assess as if you, that if it's lost, stolen, thrown out the bus window, whatever, it's covered in that event. But what's our, you know, how do Oshkosh kids treat their technology?
So, we've got Chromebooks, we've got a total of six hundred and twenty Chromebooks out there. Four have been damaged and one lost.
That's over three years.
Over the course of three years.
That's an annual rate of loss of point three percent.
This is big. I've been getting a ton of people telling me that I couldn't possibly understand what children are going to do to these devices. So, this, for me, I want like this, I'm going to make it an bumper sticker, because this is great.
If you take a look at the iPads, we have over two thousand iPads in the district already. Six were damaged by staff, eleven by kids. Now, I didn't do this to say, to throw the staff under the bus, but I didn't want you to blame the kids for all seventeen. Okay, so, and there were three that were lost. That also is a point three percent loss rate, because that's over three years.
So, and I just want to throw in, at Jefferson, where we have been, we have had the one-to-one, we've had one student that broke their device over the whole time we've had it. A couple have damaged their devices, but they're still usable, and we have one staff member who broke their device, and none of the devices have disappeared. So, we have family nights monthly, we have lots of parents in and out, and our iPads aren't locked up by any means, and so we have people in and out of that building all the time, and we haven't had a single one disappear.
We should say that they're locked up at night.
They're locked up at night.
They're locked up at night, that's true. They are locked up at night.
The other thing to realize with all of this is, this data is very similar to what other districts have experienced. Actually, it's probably a little better, but that's just because our kids are that much better. So, this is not uncommon. It surprised me a little that it was that low. I would have expected a little bit more, but this is good information. This is three years' worth of data. So, the other thing is, they know if they break it. That's one of the things, when I talk to districts, I say, well, why do you think that is? They say, because they know if they break it or without it. And it's really difficult to take, go back to paper pencil, once you've gotten used to using the tool.
That actually brings me to a question that one of my neighbors asked, which I wasn't sure, actually, how we were going to go with this, as to whether or not we are actually issuing these to a child, and they're going to have them from year to year to year. Do they get them over the summer? Are they taking them home every night? It sounds like they are not, they're locked up at nights.
Well, now they are. Now they are.
How do you envision this going forward? Are we going to, you know, if you issue this to all the high school kids, is that ninth grader going to have that same book for four years?
Usually, we like to do that, yes, because, you know, you'll have, A, it's their personal device. There's no reason, we would get it back during the summer.
Okay, that was...
And condition it.
And condition it and re-update it and make sure everything is A-OK.
But nightly, they get to take it home, just like...
They have to.
But they have to do their homework, they have to do the outside classroom.
Agreed.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, once again, the advantage is, we're going to talk to our neighbors and say, how's it working? What's the, oh, stay away from doing this, because that was a disaster. Great. You know, we know people to the north and to the south who will be doing this with us.
It's powerful for those students now, that have had them, this is their second year in, to be able to go back and look at the work that they've saved on that device. Some of them have projects that they've done the year before that they were so proud of that they still have it on their devices, and they definitely take ownership of them and are very careful with their devices as they're moving around the school.
If you were to ask some of the techs who have been in the district twenty, twenty-five years, I think they would tell you that the damage to computers and computer labs was greater than this. I know of examples where the keyboards, which were not then wireless, and they had these very delicate wires, and people had a tendency to put them in their laps to make them more convenient, and then the little wires in the back would break. So, there were problems with the keyboards. And the keyboards really, really took it hard, because we had examples of both students and staff sitting on keyboards, and they found that they didn't work very well after that. So, there were damaged keyboards for a variety of reasons.
It's not comfortable either.
And I believe the numbers would have been greater than what you've presented here over a three-year average. So, if you ask any of those techs who were around twenty, twenty-five years ago, I think they could give you the actual data.
And I would comment, from everything I've read, is the reality is that in labs, when it's, when it's not theirs, when it's everybody's, it's nobodies. And when you're assigned a particular device that you're accountable for and responsible for, it changes the whole world, because that lab might be used by twelve or fourteen different people on a given day on that computer, and in this experience, it is the phenomenon of ownership or responsibility certainly increases greatly.
Well, there's a lot less concrete parts. I mean, an iPad's nothing more than aluminum and glass. I mean, there's not much to really, unless it gets smashed, there's not much to break.
True.
I'd noticed that on some of my research, that to answer you, Matt, on the questions that you're receiving, and certainly I'm receiving them too, it seems that the average is about fifteen to sixteen pages on a centralized expectation on technology from area districts and out-of-state districts, national-wise and stuff. Otherwise, everything will be written down specifically that you are expected to have your computer in the classroom. Here's the ramifications. If you do this, you do this, you do that, you do this. Intentional damage, all this other kind of stuff, what you're expected to learn, what you're expected to do with it, how you're expected to turn it in, you know, on summer to be clean. These things are already outlined. I mean, we could just send...
Just like it is for a textbook.
Right, and you can just copy and paste and put, you know...
They actually, the kids can figure them out. You know, the kids sat down, unbox, all the things it cost us a lot of staff time to do, the kids did. They said, okay, here, you go from station A, to station B, to station C, you know, you get it entered into the system, you get it entered into the inventory, you unbox it, you put the asset tag on it, you scan the asset tag, and you're out the door, sort of the self-service key house. There's ways to do this.
There's something about that process that instills that ownership, that this is mine.
It's like you buy a new car.
Yeah, you know, like the things that we talk about with the public computers that are, it's everybody's and nobodies. A lot of those things, when the device is your own, are going to naturally solve themselves. It's a lot less funny to reverse the numbers on the keyboard when your opponent has to live with it, so...
The next piece is really about, so what does this look like here now? You know, you don't get into all the classrooms, we don't get into all the classrooms, but they are from all the classrooms, and they can share with you some ideas of what are some things that we're starting to see now, so...
As classroom teachers, these are the questions that we most frequently hear from our neighbors, from people that we connect with in the community, because they want to have their finger on the pulse of what's happening in the classroom, and they really want to know how this plays a role. And so, these are some of the things that we put together to talk about what it is, what that twenty-first century education looks like. And one of the things that we try to really emphasize with the community especially is that twenty-first century learning is not about learning technology. Learning the technology functions is that baseline. It's what we need to do to reach the higher potential of the device. It's really about connectedness, and connecting with the outside world, connecting with community, connecting with business members, connecting with members of different cultures in different parts of the world. Technology simply provides the bridge. It's how we get there. It's what connects my classroom that is surrounded by four brick walls to that greater community and the outside world. So, the main objectives of our three-year tech plan ensure that that bridge is stable, that the bridge is always in working order, ensures that all students will have access to the bridge when they need it, and it ensures that all of our teachers know how to leverage that bridge for student learning. So, the technology is the gateway, it's not the end goal. The twenty-first century schools, without adequate access to technology, will essentially become remote islands. They are isolated, they are in the bubble, they are living in a place where there is no bridge, and there is no access to outside community, outside culture. And so, when we talk about what that twenty-first century education looks like, it's not about technology, it's about how technology can open that door to a bigger world, where they can have really authentic learning experiences. So, the next natural question that we get then is, what does that look like in action? What do we see in a classroom when we're looking at that twenty-first century learning?
I get the fun job of showing you with some of the things that we're already doing in Oshkosh, and this is with minimal technology. And it's going to look like everyone having the same opportunity, and I'm going to apologize if anybody's still listening, that they gave me a lot of ideas of what's going on in their classrooms, from the elementary all the way to high school, and this is just a snapshot of some of them, using all different types of iPads, the laptops, the desktops. Chromebooks are not on here, but you'll see some pictures of them later. Kids from kindergarten through all grades, doing editing, revising, collaborating, publishing on different devices, inquiry, research, communication, debating, asking higher-level questions. And there was a lot of different examples of, ones that just stand out today, kids reading or having their own papers reread to them, so they're actually hearing what their papers sound like, to edit and revise. I mean, we never had a chance to do that. They can hear where punctuation's missing, where a better word could be used, or where repeated words are used. That hasn't been done before. And so, and then what's neat is, you know, teachers are teaching other teachers how to do those things. And then, one of the reasons why some of these teachers have this technology, and we talked about some of these schools, is they've been motivated, they've found the grants and the opportunities to do that, and now we want to make that equal, everyone have that opportunity. What this is, is just a sample, this is one classroom blogging, and we talked about being engaged, and it sounds like there's no volume on here, but this is what it can sound like. And now, this is just one example, this is before they collaborate, and actually, I made a mistake, because this isn't blogging, this is a flipped lesson, where they got the lesson from me, so they don't have to listen to me lecture, they're going on and doing the activity that's required of them. You see some of them writing, some of them with nice hair. It was, I think it was Special Hat Day or something, but this is what, they're all engaged, and they're all preparing to communicate with each other, and eventually, this information will go on their blog to the world. So, their audience just grows tremendously. So, this is what an engaged classroom might look like. I have other examples where the discussion is going on before the writing or the publishing happens. So, it's not just the device is just a tool to put it out there, all the steps to get to this level have been done already. And that's important, too, is, you know, they're still learning pencil and paper, they're still learning how to write with a notepad, and we use Post-it notes, and we try to make it authentic, so that when they publish here, they sound professional, and they can debate at a high level that they've never been able to debate before. The next one is, they want, oh, wants to play.
Yeah.
And this is just an example of some of the blogs. This is just one example of publication that I was able to take from my classroom, our school newspaper. And we used to print seven hundred, eight hundred pages to run our school newspaper, five times a year. Now it's all online. It's a blog. It's still in its infancy, but it's kinda fun to do. And it's out to parents now, where we used to just publish to students in the building. Now it goes out to parents, it goes out to public. Anybody can become a member of our blog. There's a class blog. Underneath, you see samples of student blogs. So right, not only are they blogging, communicating with the world, they also have a record of their thinking. It's like a portfolio of their learning. And then, also with that is you open up virtual classrooms. And this is already happening in our district, and you're bringing in experts, authors, people to discuss the topics. And the bottom, you see a virtual classroom happening. I believe it was another classroom. I don't know where this was getting to us.
It's a fourth grade classroom at Traeger Elementary. Patrick Amel had his fourth graders connect via the telepresence system with another fourth grade classroom in a part of the state. They were studying the geography of Wisconsin, and so they were communicating back and forth with this other fourth grade classroom, trying to figure out where in Wisconsin this other class was, and vice versa, based on hints and clues that they gave about their geography, so.
This other one is a Google Hangout, which you see a lot of, more and more examples of in our district, because we're a Google district. And we had experts come into the classroom to discuss cyberbullying. We did the research at different levels of research, and so this is one session. Parents were invited to join us in this. We also had a back-channel discussion going on at the same time, and eventually, this was logged on. But you see, these are just people from our school that were helping us with that discussion. And the second session had people from all over the district, so it was kinda neat how we just brought them in on their time, when they're available, to discuss those things with our class. So that's what it's gonna look like, and-
Moving into the high school level, this is a lot of what you will see in classrooms that are utilizing these devices in a collaborative nature. So it looks like collaboration with peers and experts via the Chromebook. This is an example of a classroom where students are working together, not only with their classmates, but they're connecting with experts. And so, in this particular picture, they're actually working on mock trials. And so, they were not only working and collaborating together, but I had students that were reaching out to criminal justice majors at the university. They were reaching out to both working and retired detectives through the Oshkosh Police Department, and asking questions about how our criminal justice system works, why certain things work the way that they do, as they were trying to prepare their own cases to bring them to trial. And so, that's an example of them connecting in that way. It looks like high school students working with communities to implement projects of their own. We showed you a couple of months ago, perhaps, the Genius Hour projects that kids are working on, and they are really hitting their stride with those projects right now. So we have students that started the process by doing a lot of their research and connecting with experts and community members online, and now have transitioned into actually forming really strong community partnerships. So we have a group of students right now that is working to host an event as a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club, and they have partnered with a number of local organizations. Beckett's has agreed to host it for them. Visual Productions is donating a stage and lighting for a runway. They've partnered with V104, who's doing all of their advertising and kind. So they've made some really solid partnerships that had to start with a way to reach outside of our classroom. We have a student who's hosting a construction competition, which if you're not familiar, you should look it up. It's fascinating. They take canned goods of certain colors and sizes, and they use it to, within a certain timeframe, create a structure that looks like a giant octopus, or whatever their team decided. And then, all of that is donated to a local food pantry when they're completed. And he's in the process of finalizing a partnership with a local car dealership who has agreed to remove all of their cars from their showroom, so that they can host it here in Oshkosh in a venue that would be very open to the public. So those are just a few examples of many of things that our kids are doing when they have the ability and the means to reach outside of our classroom using technology. So that's a really great example of how the technology is the bridge. It's not the end goal. The end goal is the community partnerships, the implementation of a plan of their own design. But it has to start with that gateway into the world that's around them. In addition to doing this with kids, we're also kind of, if we're gonna talk the talk, we have to walk the walk. And so, we also are doing a lot of similar things as staff in terms of professional development. And so, within our buildings, on our in-service days, you can see some teacher-planned and teacher-held in-service activities that include use of technology and talking about what that best practice looks like in a very formal setting. You can also see a lot of this happening within our district in a more informal setting, and these are really great examples-
Well, welcome to the teacher's on-air voice, Steve style.
Where's our volume? There we go. We don't need to listen. We can narrate for you. But this is an example of a monthly web series that Dave Last, one of our IT technicians, has gotten up and running, where we're hosting teachers in our district that are using technology in their classroom in a meaningful way to enhance learning and based on best practice. And it's an opportunity for them to not only share what they're doing with other people, but also to archive that and to create a repertoire of things that teachers can go back and search and watch on their own time. And all of this is happening with our staff with no directive from administration. And so, our staff is really latching on to a lot of the things that we're asking students to do as well.
You said no directive, not no direction.
No directive. Nobody is telling us to do these things. It's not part of our contracted day. It's not something that our administration is asking us to do as part of a veteran learning plan. It's just teachers being excited about what's happening in their classrooms and sharing that out, not only talking about technology, but demonstrating the power of technology while doing it.
So-
Yeah, you're gonna have to pause. There you go.
One of the things we wanna do, we wanted to close this with sort of visionary, so to speak. And it worked out well, because Steve talked about the eighties. So we thought we could do a little bit of back in the future. We thought it was really important for you to see what technology was like in 1980. That actually looks just like the VCR we first got. You'll notice the knobs on the front, the analog knobs. There's no digital anything. The Apple Computer was just invented. That was my video game system. I had every one of the games with it. I was in about eighth and ninth grade at this point. There's the graphics from the game. You can see, it's just like today. That's football, by the way, in case anyone remembers. You only had three people, because of the computing company. And there was your cellphone.
That's my dad.
So I'm not sure if any of you were sporting a cellphone like that, but- That was the technology in 1980. This is an excerpt from a conversation that Steve Jobs had in 1980. Now, he looks a little younger, obviously, but it really epitomized- Now, mind you, Apple had 500 employees at this point. That was at 500. So they had just been created. He went to a trade show, and he was talking about the future of computers, and why are we doing this? Because remember, at that time, and I don't know if any of you saw the movie Jobs, Steve Jobs' life. We watched that with my 21-year-old son, and I had to really take him back to tell him, no, there was no internet. It just didn't exist yet. You know, and to go back in time at this, but it's really interesting how, even at this time, some of the words that he said in 1980 really resonate forward to why we're doing this. It's very short.
Scientific American was doing a study in the early seventies on the efficiency of locomotion. And what they did was for all different species of things on the planet, birds, and cats, and dogs, and fish, and goats and stuff. They measured, how much energy does it take for a goat to get from here to there? Right? kilocalories per kilometer or something. I don't know what they measured it. And they ranked, they published a list, and then a condor won. The condor's the least amount of energy to get from here to there. And man didn't do so well. Kind of a rather unimpressive showing about third of the way down the list. But fortunately, someone at Scientific American was insightful enough to test man with a bicycle. And man with a bicycle won twice as good as the condor, all the way off the list. And what it showed was that man as a toolmaker has the ability to make a tool to amplify an inherent ability that he has. And it's exactly what we're doing here. It's exactly what we're demonstrating. We're not making bicycles to be ridden between Palo Alto and San Francisco. Okay, we're making bicycles. And yes, certain bicycles have certain generic attributes, like a general ten speeds of air driving mounts and other things like that. But in general, what we're doing is we're building tools that amplify a human ability.
And that actually is exactly what we're talking about. The reason we're doing this is to provide our students and our teachers with tools to amplify the abilities they already have. That's our presentation. So if you have any questions, we would love to answer them. It's a lot of information in one shot. But you sent us a bunch of questions, where we thought we'd answer them for you.
Additional questions? No? Any additional information or anything else that anyone wants to share with regard to the technology portion of the referendum? Or other items that this team can answer?
I do have to say, we do appreciate the opportunity to bring this to you. Also, we appreciate the opportunity to really refine the message we're going to be sharing with the community. We will certainly have a briefer version than this. But the core, the underpinnings of this will be available to everyone who wants to see it. So if you wanna go deep on this, we're more than happy to sit down and talk with anybody.
I was actually glad to hear you say that we're already prepared to be one to three, since that is something that I did hear down at Wasby as well, was that the districts that were presenting that were already one-to-one and had been for a while, were going one-to-three, because it wasn't enough.
Well, because the reality is that all of those devices that they're already bringing in, that we already know they're using, are not gonna go away just because they're of them somebody else. And you can go to any professional conference and see teachers and administrators and board members with their iPad out, and their phone out, and possibly another device. And that's gonna be the reality of our students as well.
And we've actually done live-fire tests of this network under some pretty severe conditions, and it is built well. I am very confident of the team we have in place. They do amazing work. And I would put our network up against anyone's in the state, private or public.
And as part of the technology, a number of reasons my phone has been vibrating is the fact that you're getting wonderful editorial comments out in the community from people who have my cellphone number, by telling me about how well you're doing. So what a wonderful little-
Real-time feedback.
Timing, yeah. The texting messages are coming in loud and clear about reviews. It's kind of like instant rating system.
Yes, it was also timely that you happened to jump up and produce the very video that we were talking about earlier, just before you did this session. I was wondering if you'd planned that.
You did that, boy.
Clearly showing that technology made the difference. All right. If that is all, then we will move on to our next item. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm sure there'll be more questions to come, but it was definitely very informative. Next on the agenda, consent resolution. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Does anyone wish to pull any of items one through fourteen? Barb?
Nine C.
Nine C. Anything else? Seeing none. Call her on. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. The board will consider approval of minutes of the special board meeting executive session on December 17th, 2013, minutes of regular board meeting executive session December 18th, 2013, minutes of regular meeting on December 18th, 2013, minutes of special board meeting executive session on December 19th, 2013, minutes of regular board meeting on January 8th, 2014, minutes of regular board meeting executive session on January 8th, 2014. Bills payable, personnel, A, appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, retirements, and salary schedule, B, non-renewal of temporary administrator contract, and 10, 4K staffing plan, 11, tentative collective bargaining agreement with the Oshkosh Paraprofessional Education Association, OPEA, for the 2013-2014 contract period. 12, revision of policy 443.51, possession or use of weapons. 13, revisions of policy 422.1, admission of foreign exchange students, and 14, revision to policy 443, student conduct.
Second.
Call her on.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzlak?
Aye.
Herzlak, aye. Lindberger?
Aye.
Lindberger, aye. Saganek?
Aye.
Saganek, aye. Wigenhop?
Aye.
Wigenhop, aye. Moshe.
Number nine, C. Personnel, administrator contract renewals.
Will be read at math?
Hold on. Be resolved with the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education authorize the issuance of administrator and administrative staff contracts for the 14-15 school years, as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a move in a second. Discussion. Barb?
I'm really agonized over this one. Like Mr. Mack, I have over forty years of experience in public education, most of those as a school district administrator in one form or another. And we discussed at the January 8th board meeting, and we approved the moving forward on the referendum, and I think we all felt good about that. I felt good about that. And at that same board meeting, we discussed having a committee that would look at possible reductions in budget if unfortunately, this referendum would not be approved by the voters on April 1. The last time the district had a referendum, I believe, was for the construction of the new school on the Oaklawn site. And at that time, the district had Plan B, so that if that referendum did not pass, there was going to be a southward migration of students, beginning on the north side and moving southward across the river and impacting schools on the south side as well. I know we have a Plan B in place, because we have the committee that we approved last time. My concern with this particular agenda item is that if virtually all administrators in the district have two-year contracts, taking them through 2016, there's no flexibility for the board in terms of this particular group of employees being treated differently than all the other ones, the food service personnel, the paraprofessionals, the teachers, who would be impacted by that $2.5 million reduction. So I'm not trying to single out any particular administrator, and I value the work of administrators, having been one for over twenty years. But I have a hard time voting for two-year contracts for all administrators in light of a Plan B that might force us to make very painful cuts if this referendum does not pass.
Do you wanna table it until after April 1st?
I don't think we can, because we have to have a vote before, I believe, the 31st of January by state law. So this is a conundrum for me. That's where I am.
Let me begin to speak on the issue. Part of one of the marching orders for the superintendent is to stabilize administrative employment and the attrition rate that we've had and experienced there. We presently have one temporarily filled position. That already creates one vacancy, and it's probably one more administrator than we can afford to lose. So we already have flexibility based on that, because we don't have long-term contracts for at least one position. To unstabilize the administrative group by individuals is really contrary to our strong attempts to turn around the turnover rate that we have. And with that in mind, and knowing for a while that we do have flexibility with one, and I will consider us a major victory if replacing one administrator only this year- I will consider us a major victory if replacing one administrator only this year is the only administrative position we fill. And that is, I'm hopeful, but, but we can't guarantee it, but we certainly will not have the one vacancy that it does exist in a temporary position filled before April 1st.
Can you address how we reconcile, you know, the budget cuts of $2.5 million should the referendum fail? That all employees are basically, I don't know how to say it without sounding awkward, that everybody is, the possibility of keeping your job at that point, everybody's on the block? And that administrators, because we voted for a two-year contract before we know, how does, how do we reconcile that?
Because we already are operating on administrative expenditure at the fourth lowest in the state of Wisconsin. Our, our thinness of our administrative staff today causes me to get more of these gray hair, because frankly, we, we operate on a very thin ice of making sure we cover everything. We are not heavily administratively staffed. And our, our fourth lowest administrative ratio in the state of Wisconsin with the complexity of this sized district is, is on the edge. And it's only because the vast majority of our administrators worked, worked 60 to 80 hour weeks do we hold it together. And frankly, that is a quality of the administrators that are here, that are, are doing the job to hold it together with the ratio that we presently have.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would just only add one comment relating to the issue. Within our budget reduction possibilities, we wouldn't want to mislead anyone. Food service would not be included because it's not an, it's, it's a self-supporting program.
Thank you.
Everybody, everything else is certainly correct and within that ratio, but food service is not.
Mr. Mack, if I might ask, I don't want to have an impromptu workshop on contracts here, but, you know, coming from a world without contracts, could you explain briefly the implications of our district moving to a world without contracts? What are the implications? Would we be clearly an outlier?
We'd be totally, well, first of all, we would be illegal, but we would, because you have to at least one-year contracts, you must, you must have-
Really?
You must have contracts.
Who's going to stay if you don't have a contract?
And we would be-
Nobody has contracts.
Yeah, we would have been an outlier that way. We, if it is truly desire of the board to continue a pattern of massive turnover, we deal with one-year contracts and we have people constantly saying, well, there's no stability here. We'll move on. And, and I would find that to be a really disservice to the best interests of the school district. So we would be totally an outlier. Our sister districts have individuals under contract to the legal extent of permitted by law, which is up to two years in the state of Wisconsin.
Okay.
I think, I'm looking around the room and trying to, we, we did do this once. We did go to one-year contracts. I think it was when Don Viegas was coming in, and the rationale was that it would give him some flexibility in reforming his staff. And the turmoil was not worth the, the, it wasn't worth it. And I wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to put us through that again. I don't think it was, I understand, you know, there's a, there's a possibility that the referendum might not pass, but we'll get through it.
I can recall when that happened, and the talk in the valley was honestly not very positive relative to what happened when that happened.
Obviously, you weren't with Oshkosh at the time. You were with Fond du Lac.
Correct. Yes. But I can, I recall the talk, and, you know, it unfortunately was not positive. And I would have to echo, you know, Stan's comments that I think if administrators, you know, lack of security can cause people to start to look. And I think right now, you know, we're in a much better place than what we were, and hopefully we can sustain that for a while.
Steve?
I was going to reflect on what John was saying. In January 2010, when you guys voted to go to the single-year contract for Don Vega, you lost 16 administrators within a year. And since that time, I've been kind of pushing on the opposite end to try to go to the two-year. The reason is, is I look on here, I see people like Peggy West or Al Weneck, who's been here 20 years. I see Randy Johnson, who's been here 10, almost 10 years. Brad Jodarski, Tom Hanson's been here 20 years. Kelly Handy. These are the type of people that you want to lock in, in my opinion, for two years to give you that kind of stability, instead of like taking it and putting it back on the one-year thing. I know, I understand, John, why you guys did that, what the idea there was, but it certainly didn't seem to work out very well.
No, it didn't. And I, I just want to take this opportunity to say that my six years on the board, this is definitely the best staff to a person that I've had the pleasure to work with, and I would not want to lose anybody, anyone on the staff over this one-year contract business. I think they've worked very hard. They, they deserve two-year contract.
I guess from my own standpoint, I, I don't come from a world of contracts. I, I don't understand it. I've been working for the same company for a decade, and I've never had a contract. It doesn't mean that I don't, I don't have stability. My stability is loose, I suppose. You know, they could fire me tomorrow, but they haven't. It doesn't, for me, I guess it's, I don't sit around saying, gee, I'm not going to buy a house or settle down here because I don't have a contract. I guess I don't understand the sentiment there. And when you talk about people who have, who are on staff and have been here for years and years and only have a one-year contract, I guess I see that sort of leading into my point of view as opposed to yours, because, look, they've been here that long and they haven't left, even though they've had a one-year contract. So I guess from, from my standpoint, I honestly have, and we've had this discussion before, you know, I just have never understood why contracts were important really at all, except for maybe the fact that from a standpoint of a school district, you want to make sure people are there for the school year. That seems very relevant. You know, you, you want to make sure that if you're changing people, you're changing them over the course of the summertime when school is not in session. So I guess I, I, one-year contracts as opposed to two, I, I voted for them last time, and yes, we had a giant turnover. I'm not sure if it was all related to the one-year contracts. Clearly, it had an impact in the valley, if people all over the valley were talking about us. So I'm prepared to vote for this, but I honestly have never seen that it was a, from my vantage point, I've never understood it, I guess.
Kelly?
Do you feel like your point's being heard?
I do.
You do?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did we miss your point?
No, I just-
No, I don't believe so.
I just wanted to make sure that we went back and made sure that Barb felt heard, because what I hear is you talking about inequities.
I do feel there are inequities.
And how do you, how do you, again, like Allison asked, how do you reconcile that? Even though all this makes really good sense, how do you continue to reconcile the inequities in the hierarchy? That's kind of what I really hear you talking about, and I, I don't know how to make that happen, really. I grapple with it every day.
Yeah, it's, as I said, it's a conundrum for me. I, a lot of staff have talked with me from teaching ranks primarily and paraprofessionals, very concerned about keeping their jobs or colleagues, good colleagues who have left for other districts, and not simply because of increased salaries, although that's usually happened. But I was invited last week and the week before to speak with two employee groups and one individual who had invited me in. And what I heard them all talk about was concerns about teachers in particular who have left for other districts. And the overriding issue had to do with working conditions. Elementary teachers who don't feel there's enough prep time or prep time seemingly is taken away from them for required professional development, so they are spending 60 hours or more a week at school, coming in evenings, weekends, to correct their papers and get ready for the lessons for the next day because their prep time was taken up with professional development, which they acknowledge is important. But then it takes away from their preparing for their students for the next day, which is paramount for them. And I hear from, from those same folks that they don't criticize any particular administrator, but they, they see administrators making strides financially or in terms of their, their graduate coursework that are not afforded to teachers. So it's an equity issue. So it's my conundrum. It doesn't have to be your conundrum. I felt I had to bring it up.
Well, I think it's, I think it's been mine too, because I've brought it to policy and governance a couple of times in terms of who gets to do what when and why there's, there is inequities. It's not a judgment. It just, it is. And how that plays on morale across the district. I hear it too. I hear it too.
I, I think, Barb, that teachers do work harder today and longer today than they ever did.
I believe that.
I think everybody in education does. And it's just, there's just so much change going on right now, and so many initiatives in the state. And, and that's been happening probably for about the last half dozen years. You know, I'm not quite sure how we slow the pace down. And it's hard for, it's hard for people to keep up. There's absolutely no doubt about it.
Sure.
I think the other thing, if I may add, dovetailing on Mike's comment, in 2014 coming up, this, all of the initiatives from the state and other factors that you've all talked about tonight, they all come into play. We're at, again, a crossroads of change we've never seen before, that much change in the last 50 to 70 years. There's an expression, and, and I'm not going to say, I'm not really quoting Oshkosh per se, but in general, and Barb, having done my job before, will completely understand this, this next statement. And the statement goes like this. It says that there are sometimes poor-performing buildings with good principles. And, and sometimes they're struggling to get that change going, and it takes a while. But the converse is even more, more striking. There are no good buildings with poor principles. And we can't, we, we still have a vacancy in our district trying to attract, so the, I guess the last point I'd like to add to all the comments would be, is that we're talking about future as well, and I think Barb has spoken to that, but we also have to look, as, as Mike would point out, as pointed out to me many times, the future of attracting people to this district, and, and what do we have to offer them? So just, just my two cents on, on that sitting from, from my position. I know you can relate to that.
The, the ability for us to attract in our present condition is, is not good. And our greatest frustration, even losing a person in August, and not having a, E. Cook will not be, has an excellent principal filling in, but we won't have longevity and continuity there. And success is having continuity with our principals on an ongoing basis, building a relationship with the staff and the community that is strong and stable. And our successful schools have longevity in their principalships. And creating stability in our principalships is, is damaging to the children of the district and to the well-being of the individual schools, and that's, that's a fundamental issue. And our leadership staff, in, in our next quarterly meeting, I do want to have a discussion with the board on the whole issue of, of denigration of administration, because if there's anything that would cause me to leave anytime fast or soon, is that continued diminishment of administration in this district. I have never worked with a better team. And because some people might be unhappy does not mean that their administrators are not of top quality. Our expectations for performance and how we treat people, how they are respectful of people are second to none. And, and I still have people, because from my first coming into the district, I spoke about the issue of 39 years and never uttering an expletive. And I still have people, they occasionally slip on a word, and they apologize instantly because that's their expectation in knowing and understanding that respect, dignity relating to individuals. And I think we have to have a discussion about this because all of these erode the issue of, of how we stabilize a, a administrative staff. There is nothing that causes me greater irritation than diminishing good people doing their job. Sometimes the message is not wanting to be heard, and when we have individuals, then the fact that it's said does not mean it's true. And we've got to be careful in sorting that out. And the accountability that we have in the district of reporting through the chain of command, if there is someone who has legitimate issues, they can always have access to me. I meet with anyone, anytime, and I can guarantee that we'll get to the bottom of issues that if treated, people are not being treated respectfully. But from a standpoint of that kind of alienation, you cannot operate in a district with that kind of anti-administrative tendencies and feel like you can produce the outcomes that are so critical to the success of this school district.
Man?
John, Barb will look at it this way. We're elected to the school board to make sure that the children in this district get an outstanding education. Tonight, we saw Seth's representation that I thought was an outstanding plan to make that happen, and it was an outstanding plan because it was put together by an outstanding team of people. But that plan is just a plan. It's not operationalized yet. We need those people to make sure that plan unfolds the way it's supposed to. Going to a one-year contract is going to turn, we've seen this, it's going to turn the, the turnstile on again. And with people coming and going, I, I have a fear that that plan will never be implemented well. Going to a one-year contract might make some conservatives in this district happy, but that's not what we're elected to do. We're elected to make sure that students get an outstanding education. And we need to make sure that the people that put that plan together are here to implement it. That's how I see it.
And I would just like to add lastly.
I'm somewhat confused. I'm somewhat confused, because I didn't think the discussion that we were having was discounting to administrators at all. I, I didn't feel that at all. I value every one of them. I thought the discussion that we were having was the inequity around the people that aren't administrators. I think, I thought that's what we were talking about.
For me, it was an equity issue.
It was an equity issue not to discount anybody. I would never want to do that.
There, there is correspondence that relates to that issue, and that's something that I, I read very carefully. Let me assure you that an extension of a two-year contract for every individual that is on the list and the one with the one-year contract takes away not from anyone being terminated for cause, no matter what. This is not a guarantee of employment. If a person is not performing to standards, they will not be here. And I can tell you that. That, so this is not a lifetime performance or even a two-year lifetime agreement. If they're not performing to standards, they will be gone. And that is a guarantee. What it does is it deals with the stability of employment based on individuals performing to expectation, but it doesn't create a guarantee of employment because a person who fails to do their work or doesn't- or does anything else that would relate to either negligence or malfeasance or really not carrying their load will not be here until the end of that two-year period.
I guess I just, I'm still trying to reconcile the 100 teachers that we lost this past summer. If the contracts don't really mean anything except that it's kind of like this thing that we give to administrators to make sure they know that they're valued. And I'm happy to do that. But I am also hearing from teachers saying, "We're losing teachers at an alarming rate." They are leaving for all sorts of reasons that may or may not include salary increases. And when they're constantly on the chopping block each and every year, I think that that has a, that kind of, it lowers morale. And I'm not saying that I'd want to add administrators to that, you know, that crummy group of people that have to look at that every year, right? And, but, you know, the other side is when you're constantly fearful for your own job, you tend to then look at the others and say, "How come they got it so good? How come I can't have that?" And it's happening here. It's human nature. It's not that, you know, but it is what it is. And so, I think that's what you were trying to address, maybe. I don't know. I too, I'm troubled by it. I'm troubled by the contracts partly because anytime an administrator does want to leave, we let them out of the contract. So, it doesn't mean anything on their end when they want to leave, of course.
At this point, that has changed. Because we do actually have something in the contracts at this point. And I would agree with you completely.
To date, we have done nothing.
In previous years, when somebody left, they came before us with a 45-day notice and they were out of here. And I used to say the same thing. Well, you know, why bother even having these contracts? Of what use? In fact, I still say it. But only because I still don't understand why having the contract itself is that big a deal. But yes, you're right. It used to be something that
Historically, it doesn't.
That had no, no great weight from their end. Now, now when they leave, the contracts actually do have a clause which penalizes them for leaving. Financially, for leaving early. So, there is at least some modification.
But we did lose 100 teachers last year. So, what are we going to do about that?
But we didn't terminate 100 teachers last year. They left on their own. That, they chose to leave for varying reasons.
So, the teachers that are here saw mass exodus of peers. And now they see that once again, they're on the chopping block unless we vote for this referendum. And they're paranoid. You know, I don't know if this is something that's going to help one-year contracts, but, you know, it's something that we should probably bounce around. It's okay.
Well, I guess what I was going to say is that since 2010, when I got on this board, I've, you know, dealt with, as we all have, the Oaklawn question, the loss of administrators, Act 10, the loss of teachers, all these varying contracts that we deal with, the loss of, through open enrollment of students, facilities that were in the neighborhood of $60 million in deferred maintenance, our energy situation. And I guess over the course of that four years, what I've seen is, is that we, it would be awesome if we had a silver bullet to solve all this at once, but we don't. And my concern is, is that it is better to at least secure a part of something to grant stability so we can move forward and try to deal with the next problem. And over the course of that four years, I've seen us move on nailing over $30 million worth of maintenance issues in these buildings. And I've seen us sit there and build an E. Academy and the Riverside program and a lot of other initiatives, certainly Oaklawn School. And to me, the real issue here is, yes, of course, there's inequity built in with this situation. Everybody seems to be getting their turn on this at some point. And now it looks like this evening after the facility in finance saying it sounds like that the Southside solution is going to get ramped up a bit. So, it looks like maybe their turn is coming up on these long list of standing problems. It's an amazing juggling act by a bunch of amazing people. And that includes this board, in my opinion. That over the course of the four years that I've been on here, that this is no easy fix on anything. And I'm amazed that we still are, we still move forward on some of these things. We'll sit there and stop stuff and that was, and that's what I saw as the real issue. And I guess that's why I have the, I want the stability, any kind of stability that we can get. Because with the four superintendents and the five business managers and all these other, I mean, you know, an initiative comes in and it's, and then the guy's gone or the woman's gone. And then it just, so it starts over again. And there is the real, there's the real rub. There's the real loss that we have, you know? Is that nothing ever gets accomplished. At least this way, we're getting something done. And the educators, the inequity between this, I've set up policy and governance with the, because something needs to be done about it. And it's not off the plate. We're still looking at it.
Well said, Steve. Thanks.
Yes. Call the roll?
Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye, Rosak?
Aye.
Rosak, aye, Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye, Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye, Wuthenaw?
Aye. Do I have any requests for future agenda, for future agenda items?
Shorter meetings.
We have kind of damaged our earlier record, haven't we?
If we average the whole thing out, it's really much.
I think we have enough on our plate.
We, did the part about expanding, speaking of Riverside program and other programs, did that ever get onto the agenda, onto future agenda items?
No, they were still.
I think that was asked. Okay.
It's coming up with some alternative.
Then we'll move on to announcements. Any? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Call the roll?
Garner? Aye.
Aye.
Rosak, aye, Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye, Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye, Wuthenaw?
Aye.
Aye.
Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye.
We are adjourned.